Wilson.
Here.
Commissioner Musich.
Present.
Commissioner Menz.
Here.
Commissioner Alper.
Present.
Commissioner Abene.
Present.
Vice President Smith.
Here.
President Forney.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That action carries. Okay, on to the approval of the minutes. We have minutes from October 22nd, 2002. A motion to accept those.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Action carries. Okay, on to reports of officers. Superintendent Bangora, and we will then also be having then a presentation by Joel Allen, KP Companies, after his report.
All right.
Take it away.
Thank you, President Forney and Commissioners. Great to see everybody. I'll push this way so not so loud. Welcome, everyone. So we'll start off with the citywide Halloween events, of course. Harrison Park hosted a spooktacular Halloween party. Youth, teens, and families participated in face painting, gym games, and spooky dance room. There were 160, 186 participants in this year's activity. It's a great turnout. Logan Park hosted their annual Halloween party at the Tiny Tot Indoor Playground. The event had a bounce house, face painter, arts and craft kits, and treat bags. Fun was had by all 75 people enjoying the day. Audubon Park hosted the Halloween party for over 100 families. The event was free and included pumpkin decorating, a bounce house, games, treats, and apple cider. The Lower and Upper South Service Area areas put on a drive-in trunk or treat. Forty cars registered and 122 people attended. The movie and theme for the event was Hocus Pocus. The kids and families drove through the trunk or treat, received a goodie bag, and some treats for the movie. McCray Park hosted the Howl-ween event. Activities included a prize hunt, doggie, doggie goodie bags, treats for humans, and a costume contest. NPRB was busy hosting great Halloween events this year, with recreation centers among hosting 29 community and 15 teen Halloween events across our park system. Great, great effort by our parks and very grateful for providing those services for our communities. So wonderful, wonderful thing. Adult Athletics. Winter adult sport registration is now open for volleyball, broomball, basketball, and pond hockey. Currently, we have over 280 teams have been registered in wintered sports, and we are looking forward to a great season. In Aquatics, aquatics is currently operating a full schedule at the Phillips Aquatics Center. We have the girls MPS swim team six days a week, 175 in youth swim lessons, seven in adult beginner swim lessons, and 62 in our youth swim team, the junior swim club. Coming up later this month is the annual Thanksgiving 5K swim event. Golf, Theodore Worth and Fort Snelling will be closing after Sunday, November 6th, and the other courses will stay open as long as the weather allows. Winter operations begin for the Lopet, I used to say Lopet, but I'm saying Lopet now to say, say right, foundation on November 15th, and we will be, we will have groomed trails at Worth, Columbia, and Hiwatha Golf Course this winter. Ice Arenas. Ice Operations is in full swing at Parade and Northeast Arena. Both facilities are scheduled for full capacity with youth hockey, high school hockey, figure skating, open hockey, and ice skating. Let's talk about youth sports a little bit. NPRB's Fall Youth Soccer. The 2022 NPRB soccer season concluded on October 19th. As we continued to work our way after the pandemic, we saw an increase of six additional teams in 2022. Congratulations. NPRB Fall Youth Flag Football. A great article in the Stern Tribune highlighted former Minnesota Viking great and retired Associate Justice of the Minnesota Supreme Court, Alan Page's granddaughter, Amelia. Amelia and her team competed in the park board flag football playoffs at Armitage Park on the first and only all-girls team in the sixth grade division. The 2022 NPRB Youth Flag Football season concluded on October 29th with 48 teams. So if you see the article, it's really, really adorable. So very proud. NPRB Fall Winter Youth Volleyball. Youth volleyball kicked off the season with this past Saturday, October 29th, and the number of teams have increased from 44 teams in 2021 to 56 teams in 2022. You're starting to see a pattern of actually increases in numbers. It's very exciting to hear that. So hope you're taking note of that. It's really good. Recreation and Service Area Highlights. North Service Area, Favview, held a senior luncheon and volunteers helping seniors navigate their mobile devices. Fall Wall Park's youth line took 30 youth to the haunted hayride in Wyoming, Minnesota. Youth were delightful, delightfully terrified, that's kind of a, okay, delightfully terrified, and faced their fears exploring the scary exhibits. Okay. Southwest Service Area. Southwest Senior Luncheon was in the midst of the program when construction workers outside hit a gas line. This led to evacuating the building, but thanks to the hard-working staff that day, Bingo went on and was held outside. Talk about, you don't stop recreation, I'm telling you. Keeps rolling. Lindell Park Rec Plus kids were able to pick up the pumpkins from the Mount Olive, Olive Church Annual Pumpkin Patch Sale that benefits their choir program. Upper South Service Area, Longfellow Park hosted the annual pumpkin carving, which, where participants enjoyed caramel apples while cleaning and carving pumpkins. Elliott Park, staff-led youth in making pies from scratch, utilizing hand-picked apples from the recent field trip to the orchard. Pies were shared with residents and of the Augustana, Augustana seniors. That's really cool. Spark Studios, Potahorn Park. Freshman students from Crystal Ray Jesuit High School visited Potahorn Studio for the first time. They collaborated as a group to collectively write and produce a song with studio specialist Bryce Kalal. Spark Studios is working with Crystal Ray to organize more school field trips and to host recording time for their youth music clubs. That's pretty cool. Full Service Community Schools. Bethune School is excited to collaborate with the following community partners this fall to provide after-school programming. These community partners were strategically selected to align with the curriculum at Bethune School. These programs start on October 24th. NPRB Naturalists, Mike Madison is the photographer, Northern Clay, Northern Clay Center, Kids Create Steam, the Cow, the Cowls Center, which is a dance, and the Athletics Global Basketball. Great partnerships and great job by Bryce, who's doing great work over there at Bethune. Environmental Safety. Forestry. Forestry crews are taking advantage of the low water levels to clear tree debris from Minnehaha Creek, Bassett Creek, and Shingle Creek. Over time, fallen trees will collect leaves and trash, which can restrict water flow and cause flooding. By using forestry equipment, this tedious process is made as safe as possible. Environmental Management highlights 2022 Community Gardens Season Wrap-Up. 140 community gardens tended plots at nine park sites. Sorry, 140 community gardeners tended plots at nine park sites. North was Level Square and Sumner Field. East of the river was Dickman and Towerside. Downtown was Franklin Steel and Loring, and south was Potahorn, Sibley, and Sepro. We completed a pilot program with Hennepin County Master Gardeners to provide educational programming for community gardeners. Spring of 2023 community garden installations are in the works for Peavy Park and Lindell Farmstead. Applications are open for the 2023 season. We have a 15% increase over last year in the number of applications so far. Asset Management. Equipment Shop. NPRB's new crane boat purchased this spring ventured onto the Mississippi River for the first trip this fall. The aim of this maiden voyage was to aid in cleaning up and a Benin Riverfront encampment. The encampment was located in remote areas of the bottom of the steep embankment. Traversing the steep embankment at this location would have made it, the riverside cleanup difficult by land for parkkeeper staff. NPRB Crane Boat made it easier for quick work of cleaning up the site. And what you see there is them basically assisting in the site cleanup. New trucks are starting to arrive after having ordered their approximately, being ordered approximately a year ago. Equipment service accepted delivery of two trucks recently for NPRB Park Keeper Crew Leaders. Picture below are Ann Fleischer and who had worked for NPRB, who has worked for NPRB for 38 years, and Rodney Crooks with 25 years of service. See here, we got Lower South Service Area Dock and Buoy Removal and Fall Cleanup. The asset management team is putting away docks and buoys for the season. This work is incredibly challenging, and the weather adds to the unpredictability of the work. Additionally, as park usage, park usage slows down after a busy summer, NPRB's staff use the opportunity to clean and maintain areas where we nearly do not have access to, such as removing growth from fence lines, clearing sightlines, and moving leaves away from drains. Trades Paint Shop. Moze Ore, Paint Shop Foreman, met with representatives from the Asset Management Planning, Communications, and the Bens Thompson BTR Architects to review the second round of color samples for the Lake Harriet Ban Shale. Sample boards were, were built by NPRB carpenters and painted stained and by the paint shop. All the roof shingles will be replaced, and the sightings will be repainted at the Lake Harriet Ban Shale. The project went out for bid in 2022 and is projected to be completed in 2023, giving the ban shale and surrounding building a fresh, new look. Horticulture. The Horticulture Team completed planting flower bulbs across the park system in October. This season, the team planted 53,000 bulbs that will bloom next spring between March and July. This includes the Spring Flower Show at the Lindell Park, which is planned for May 2023. So mark your calendars. It's going to be incredible. After two seasons of drought conditions, planting, plantings across the city are displaying symptoms of drought stress. While our irrigation system and hose bids are winterized by the, by this point this year, the team continues to water in hopes of improving winter survival, survival rates. This is done by using gravity tanks in the back of vehicles and our water trucks. The new water trucks have a front water cannon feature that allows staff to water larger areas such as shrub beds, which are extremely time-consuming with a hose. You may see this truck around town at sites like Nakoma's Naturescape or the Commons. Planning. MPRT Phase One. Work continues on the intersection of the trail improvements at the East Minnehaha Parkway and East 50th Street. Construction crews have been busy completing grading, base prep for curbing, and preparation for installation of pavement. Bitimis pavement on the Parkway and Regional Trail is expected to be placed within the next two weeks, with the intersection and trail reopening for use following the curing period. Some work potentially including additional lifts of pavement, pavement marking, and landscape planning may be completed in the spring. Northeast Athletic Park, Field Park. Mass grading work is largely completed at the Northeast Athletic Field Park. Construction crews are busy installing lighting, fencing, and dugouts, as well as fine grading. Work will wrap up on the site this, in the next week or so, with the installation of sod and irrigation in the spring. The field is anticipated to open for use late summer and early fall 2023. I expected to see Commissioner Menz in the picture, but I didn't see you there, so. You did, okay. We got to capture you next time. Fall Joint Park Tour with the City of St. Paul Parks and Recreation Design and Construction Team. The NPRB Planning Team organized a joint park tour with the St. Paul Parks and Recreation Design and Construction Division. The tour featured guided visits of the new development at the Unsi Maka Park and Highland Bridge Plaza. I actually had this phonetically spelled, but it's not in my actual updates here, so I apologize. And Highland Bridge Plaza in St. Paul's old Ford Plant. In Minneapolis, the group visited the new pump track at Perkins Hill Park and the Elliott Skate Park and the renovated Seven Pools. Both teams shared their design and construction management, expertise or experiences, and lessons from their park projects. The inter-agency collaboration was so constructive that both teams planned to make the tour an annual fall event. Really cool. 2022, I think it's the last one. 2022 Citywide Survey. Communications and Marketing contracted with a local full-service research firm and worked in collaboration with the executive team on development and deployment of a statistically valid citywide telephone survey of Minneapolis residents. Survey calls began today and are expected to take about four weeks to complete. The survey includes 121 questions that will help measure resident satisfaction about multiple park board services, amenities, and experiences. A total of approximately 900 residents will be surveyed, including 80 to 85 residents in each of the six commissioner districts, and a balloon sample of an estimated 400 residents to ensure communities of color are accurately represented. Once the survey calls are completed, the survey data will be reviewed, analyzed, and compiled into a report. The survey findings and final report will be presented to the Board of Commissioners at the January 4th, 2023 Board Meeting. And I think on the slide, it kind of walks through, yeah, the specific questions. Great. With that, I think I made a good time here. I am now going to turn this over to Joel Allen from KP Companies on a hiring update.
Welcome, Joel.
Hello. President Forney, Vice President Smith, Commissioners, Superintendent, very nice to see all of you. I have a really short update. We are in the middle of our searches, and so I am limited in terms of how much information I can give in this public forum, just given where we are in the search, but feeling really good about where we are. First, the Director of Community Connection and Violence Prevention. We conducted first-round interviews last week or so, and we narrowed it down from four candidates to two who did second-round interviews yesterday. We're going into the assessment, reference check, and background check phases for that, and we should be able to name a new director as soon as those things are completed. And so I would say two to three weeks or so, and certainly allowing for things like giving notice if it's appropriate and all of the background investigation. So that's where we are with that search coming to the end. In terms of the Assistant Superintendent for Recreation, which is the one probably you guys are all most interested in, we have first-round interviews set for Thursday, November 17th. We have strong candidates going into that round. We'll do second-round interviews the following day, which is on Friday. They'll go through during that two-day period a variety of panels, as well as tours of the park, and will be asked to put together a scenario based, based on an issue facing the parks right now. And so that's all I can really say about that. We'll wrap up the interview phase again with assessments, reference checks, and a background investigation. And given both the holidays and candidate notice periods and scheduling and all of that kind of stuff, I foresee having someone onboard by the end of the year, maybe the first of next year, given where we are.
Thank you so much for both presentations. Commissioners, do you have any questions of either Commissioner Alper?
Thank you. I have a question for Superintendent Bangora. I, I know I wrote you about this earlier, but I just wanted to say that I am being questioned about how a potential strike of 363 members would impact voting, given that many places are polling places, voting centers are located in our rec centers. Could you give an update on that? Thank you.
Yes, President Forney, Commissioner Alper, I actually was going to give the statement after, and I kind of went past it, but what I can tell you very simply, on October 28th, Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board, of course, received the intent to strike. Notice from the City Employees Union Local 363. On the 28th, the NPRB statement in response to the notice was shared with, of course, all you Commissioners, all park employees, and with also the news media. 5:00 AM Tuesday, November 8th is the earliest the strike can occur. And the last thing I will say with that is that we are getting questions, as you know, regarding the polling location at parks. So all 35 locations, 34 rec centers, and one golf clubhouse will be staffed. Picketing cannot be done within 100 feet of the building entrance. So what I can assure you is that we will have all polling places open, available for, of course, all of our residents to go vote, so there's no concerns there. We also have left 10 copies and statements for you to have, if there's any questions that you might have, but we do have those also available for you. So we are well aware of this, and we are taking, making sure that all locations are open.
Thank you for that update. Vice President Smith.
Thanks. Thank you. This one, my first question is for Superintendent Bangora. For the citywide survey, where are we getting the contact information for the folks that we're doing the survey for?
President Forney and Commissioner Smith, I am going to defer this to, of course, the one that's leading this is Director Summers, who will come up to, I know your name, Director Summers.
President Forney, Commissioner, Vice President Alper, I'm sorry, I should leave my glasses on. I would be able to see all of you much better. Yes, my team, so we have used Decision Resources, and they are now called Morris Leatherman, and so they have the databases. And what's important for Commissioners to know is that most people don't have landlines, so they make sure that their calls reflect the demographics of Minneapolis residents. And so they are randomly chosen phone numbers out of the databases that they have that include both landlines, but also mobile phones, so that they reach people that reflect, and again, they're really targeted to make sure that their, their, their calls are reflecting the demographics of the city.
Okay. Those phones, are they going to also use text, or is it just going to be a person-to-person pickup? I'm sorry, I don't recall it from the notes.
It is, it is a person-to-person pickup, and I will say that they've had, again, they do these, this is what they, they specialize in, and they're very good at it, and we've actually had a really high response rate, given the, the number of questions we have. It's one reason we limit it to 120, is they know that pass that people won't stay on the line, but they actually have a really high success rate of people responding and people taking the full survey.
Okay. Okay, my next question is for Ms. Allen. For the panel interviews, I know you can't say much, but I'm just curious, does that consist of actual community members, or is it only internal staff?
No. Yeah, it would be only internal staff. And keep in mind, because we're dealing with HR issues, we cannot have community members in that part of the interview process. Now, often what we will do is some kind of community meet and greet later on the line when we have kind of narrowed it down to whoever the candidate is going to be, but this early on, we are not allowed to do that.
Okay, got that part. Does that involve Commissioners?
No, it does not.
Okay. And does the diversity of the panel, is it racially diverse of the panel, the internal staff panel?
The, the panel is reflective of the current park board staff. That's what I will say. I mean, we can only be as diverse as, as we are internally.
I understand. I got you. Okay. And those parks that you're going to visit, when the candidates, so it will be the slew of candidates that are maybe the top candidates that will then tour the parks, are they touring to meet the park directors or touring the site when it's not operational?
So they're touring the site during, during interview times or during the day. So the parks will be fully operational. They'll go to a variety of parks in different areas. The goal is for them to get a holistic view of the park system.
Okay, and that you're saying, so there will be folks who will tour like north, northeast, south, southeast, that we're not just kind of going to parks in southwest Minneapolis?
Southwest.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Musich.
Thank you, President Forney. I just have a clarifying question for Superintendent Bangora. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
For the update. You had mentioned that picketing would not be allowed within 100 feet of the entrance of the polling place. I'm an election judge, and part of the training was notifying us that people cannot campaign or linger within 100 feet of the public property on which the polling place is located. So if we could verify that picketing would fall under that rule as well, and then make sure whoever's enforcing that has the appropriate information, that'd be great. Because I would hate for election judges to try to be enforcing something that, that we've informed people differently about, so just, if we could clarify that, that'd be lovely. Thank you.
Joel, in the past, we've believed we've done, I think there's two I've gone to. Anyway, we've had a kind of a reception. People could meet the candidates. Are we doing anything like that this time?
We will do a meet and greet, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, in the middle of the day.
So that would be on like the 17th?
That'll be on the 17th.
On the 17th, okay. That's good to know and everything, because I, I found it helpful at least. So I appreciate your efforts on this, and I have one other question here from Vice President Smith.
I do have one more question. Please forgive me if I missed it. So the candidates in which President Forney is referring to this meet and greet sort of style, that will be after the offer has been made, or will that be pre?
No, that'll be after we've narrowed it down.
Okay.
Right? And so then it'll just be park board, but it won't be extended community, right?
I got you.
It'll just be park board folks, right? And Commissioners would be included in that.
Okay.
They'd like to come to the meeting.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I'm not sure if I understood. Would it be all the candidates, or would this just be the candidate it's been narrowed down to, or?
Yeah, the candidates that participate in first-round interviews.
Okay. Good. Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions? Oh, excuse me, Commissioner Menz.
Thank you, President Forney. And would the Commissioners have any, will you be asking for feedback after that meet and greet if there's anything that, you know, any generalities that we see in the meet and greet, or opinions we have?
Yeah, so I typically kind of peruse the area and, and I watch, right? And so I get feedback in general from everyone who's there. There are no formal questions or formal role for the Commissioners or truthfully others at that time. It really is a chance for the candidate to meet folks at the park board and vice versa. However, if you have feedback, I would love to hear it.
I'm not seeing any other questions, so thank you so much. I appreciate it. And being the closeness to our open time, I am just going to move to it. So I'm going to read a statement, and I'm assuming we have some people, well, whatever. Anyway, Open Time Rules. Okay, thanks to all of you who want to share your thoughts and ideas with us during open time. Before we start, I want to provide an abbreviated version of Open Time Board Rules. All individuals wishing to speak may call in before noon the day of the meeting to be placed on the agenda or can sign up at the board meeting prior to the start of open time. I will be calling on people on the signup list only. Open time for public input shall not exceed a total of 15 minutes with the time limit to be allocated by me, the president. Please watch the timer right up here to be considered of others here to speak and stay within your allotted time. During open time, public testimony will be given without debate, and only clarifying questions from the board will be allowed. Two types of items not appropriate for open time. In order to protect the privacy of all individuals, those are pending litigation and personnel issues. Please refrain from commenting on specific personnel issues. We will not tolerate discriminatory or and/or harassing words directed at anyone. So please ensure that all comments you make tonight comply with the policy. This board made the decision many years ago to operate under Robert's Rules of Order. Under Robert's Rules of Order, the ceding of time to another person is not allowed. So only those signed up to speak may only speak for their allotted, own allotted amount of time. We also request that each speaker provide his or her name and address. And I also just want to comment that at 5:45, we will also be having a public hearing. Is that right? Yes, thank you. Public hearing regarding trees, assessments, so please realize that there is a difference between the two. So I have, one, two, I have eight, thank you. Anyway, so speakers who wish to speak, so I'm going to call each person and allow them two minutes to speak. The first person is Tracy Nordstrom, and to queue yourself up is Scott Jaeger. Welcome, Tracy.
Hello, Park Board.
Excuse me.
Excuse me. Former Park Commissioner. That's awfully sweet of you.
Sorry.
President Forney, Madam Vice President, Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Counselor, Ms. Secretary, and esteemed public and staff of Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board. My name is Tracy Nordstrom. I live at 3301, wait for it, East Bidet-McCosco Parkway. Easy to say, even easier to love. I am a former Park Commissioner. Thank you, President Forney, for District Four, and I would like to acknowledge Commissioner Schaefer, who is my, along with the at-large members. I am here tonight to offer words of support and elation over the resolution that will come forward in Admin and Finance regarding the five-year lease agreement with Lola's Cafe on the Pla. Cafe on the Plaza at the refectory at Bidet-McCosco. I served on the CAC originally on, for all of the restoration of Bidet-McCosco and Harriet. And one of the things we were most excited about was food at the lake. I was also here, sitting in your seats, when we worked on the enterprise fund to bring in a diversified source of revenue. People want food at our lakes, and Pimento, I think there are a number of supporters in the room, will be the ones chefing and preparing the food. And I am a frequent eater at Pimento on Nicolet on Eat Street. It is a fantastic restaurant, and Tommy Beavis, the chef, is an amazing entrepreneur. This is a great opportunity to provide great food for our park users, the million or so who visit Bidet-McCosco each year, to support a local successful business, and to bring really much needed revenue into our system.
Thank you, former Commissioner, I appreciate it. And I apologize, I misread things, and Pat Smith actually was number one on the list. Is Pat around? Thank you, Pat. And then after that, Scott Jaeger, my apologies.
Good evening, President Forney, Park Board members. On behalf of, by the way, sorry, I'm Pat Smith, 4554 Zenith Avenue, South. On behalf of Playball Minneapolis, thank you, thank you, thank you to the board and staff for supporting the creation of four athletic technical advisory committees. I also want to thank Planning Director Schrader for his patience with me throughout this whole thing. And I also want to say, President Forney and Commissioner Musich, it was very astute of you to encourage or require the additional three TAC committees besides just Diamond Sports. Just last month, my daughter, who plays southwest soccer, they're hosting East Ridge at a Minneapolis park, I believe it was Nacomis. And the East Ridge soccer players were teasing the southwest players because of the conditions of the field. So it's not just Diamond Sports, but it's just the conditions of all our athletic facilities, especially when we're hosting these suburban schools. One of the things that we would recommend additions to the staff report, one is to have a priority list of the recommended improvements. This won't tie the board to doing any of these improvements, but it would just kind of give a priority list as what we would like to see done first and so forth. Second one is funding. How can, we should have a discussion about how can we raise the funds to make these improvements, either by the board or the individual community, or committees, community groups. And then lastly, I really think we should have a discussion on how we can best market and advertise all of our different sporting activities. The St. Louis Park Baseball Association is advertising in the newsletters of our schools, and I asked their staff three times a couple of years ago to do that, and never got it done until after my third time. Anyways, sorry for going over. Again, I appreciate this a lot, and so does the group Playball Minneapolis. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Scott Jaeger, and then after that is Kierik. I think it's Sorbacher, Sarbacher, I'm sorry if I got your name wrong.
Hello, Commissioners, sorry, I'm really nervous. So I'm just going to, I'm a member of 363 Local, if you know, tonight we have negotiations. From what we're hearing, nothing's becoming of a standstill. I heard Mr. Bangora talk about striking, and that is very unfortunate. So I'm going to read you an email Mr. Bangora sent to us. From 2012 to 2021, inflation has risen 21.5%. The park board has given their employees 22.56. In nine years, we have 1.056 more percent buying power in that same timeframe. Minneapolis park system has won best park system in the nation, 2013, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18. Third place in 19, we won in 2020. I don't have the numbers for 2021 or this year. And if we accept this contract, we will be worth negative 5% in 10 years, negative 5% buying power, where you have won the best park system on the backs of my 800 and some brothers and sisters, or 230 brothers and sisters in the union, and your workers in the park board. And he justifies this by saying, you're getting the same raise as everybody else. That's a shame. That's a shame, that in 10 years, you have won the best park system seven times. And we are worth negative 5% less buying power than we had in 2012. I have to decide to eat fresh vegetables or canned. It's a joke. We have to threaten to strike. I have to go unpaid from work to get what we deserve, negative 5%. And he's okay with that. Negative 5% over 10 years. If we accept the contract, it'll go to as much as negative 10%. Negative 10% in the last 12 years. You have paid your workers negative 12% buying power. I'm sorry, I'm not mad, I'm just, thank you, thank you very much, I'm sorry. Thank you.
And then after that is Zaylor Stout, I believe I have that.
Madam President, Commissioners, thank you for your time today. My name is Karik Sarbacher. I live at 4112 Chicago Avenue, South. I'm an arborist here with NPRB, and I stand before you in solidarity with my local 363 family to ask you for a fair contract. We're daily faced with the reality of the disparity of not only income, but also working and living conditions within our communities. And if there has ever been a time to build community, it is here and it is now. I am willing to take a pay cut, in real terms, I am willing to do that, if the concessions to the parkkeepers portion of our contract can be dropped, and we can move forward in negotiating and avoid a strike. We all want to avoid a strike, not one of us wants to go on strike, but it's a really difficult decision that we're being faced with right now. This is the neighborhood where you live, Madam President. Is the work that we do important to you? And how important is it? And what are you willing to do to support us? I volunteer my time to teach kids the importance of trees, to teach them how to climb trees, to teach them what I do in my work and how it is relevant to their basic needs. How can I teach anyone about basic needs when my basic needs are not being met? Someone approached me outside of the co-op this week and asked me what I thought, how I thought racial equity could be achieved. And I had a lot of ideas. I served in the Peace Corps in Senegal, West Africa, as an agroforestry volunteer. I had a lot of ideas, and I started spouting them out. And then I realized, after about three or four ideas, the answer is not in my ideas, the answer is listening to the voices of the people that are being affected by this inequality. So I would urge you to please hear our voices, see our faces, we're real people, we're not numbers, we're not bodies. Really don't appreciate being referred to as a body when I give my heart and soul and everything that I do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Zaylor. And then after that is Samlo Hyland, I think, I'm not sure, pronouncing that correctly.
Good evening, Madam President, as well as Park Board Commissioners. My name is Zaylor Stout. I'm a resident here in North Minneapolis, an attorney, a DEI expert, as well as an LGBT and Black history historian and community organizer. I'm here to levy my full support in regards to selecting Pimento's Jamaican Kitchen to occupy the restaurant space located at Lake Bidet-McCosco. Pimento's has many accolades. Pimento's has many accolades, some you may already have heard about. 100 Most Influential in Global Food, 40 Under 40 Honoree, 10-plus Years as a Global Corporate Responsibility Leader, James Beard Foundation Recognized Chef, as well as award-winning philanthropist. But though these accolades are amazing, there are others that are more hard to find and aren't necessarily made public. While the Twin Cities was riled in anger after the murder of George Floyd, buildings were burning, community members were serving as overnight to protect businesses in North Minneapolis from being burned down by people that don't live here, yet Pimento's Jamaican Kitchen stayed open. They stayed open as a food hub in a food desert that was left after the riots. They, along with, I, along with many others, hundreds of others, not only volunteered and donated supplies, but also served as volunteers to ensure that our community members were able to receive the food and supplies that they desperately needed. As well, Minneapolis has a diversity, equity, inclusion policy, as well as it relates to using diverse suppliers, and so this would help the city's efforts in regards to ensuring that those figures are met. So I, again, urge you to strongly consider using Pimento's, as well as Tommy Beavis, especially given the fact that they're significant community leaders, and these are the types of people that we need to uplift. Thank you.
Samlo Hyland, and then after that is Charles Goodwill, and then Troy Baker.
Hi, guys. My name is Samuel Hyland. I'm a resident of 4953 Knox Avenue, North. I started as a parkkeeper two years ago, and for the most part, I've really enjoyed my job. It's a lot, it's a lot of work. We work very hard to keep these parks clean. I've been in Southwest, which used to be the regional district. I worked citywide, doing baseball fields, making ice in the winter, and in Northeast, yeah, Northeast Minneapolis is where I'm currently working. Two years ago, I made the decision to become a parkkeeper. It was very difficult for me. I have eight-plus years of experience in natural resources, in natural resources management degree. I decided to come here because I thought it would be awesome to serve my community members, which I've been a part of my entire life. I believe that I wouldn't be able to accept the job that I accepted two years ago had the contract that is being proposed to us, as it's proposed, went through. A year-long probationary period is pretty insane. You can't take vacation, longevity pay, leaving, 20 years down the line, I'm never going to make a cent more than I make today. The bid system in question, I can't move where I want to work. That seems like an issue to me. I don't think that people like me and people who want to be like me would work for the park board in these conditions, I think. Thank you.
Charles, and then Troy. Charles Goodwin, and then Troy Baker, please.
Did you say Charles?
I said Charles Goodwin, Goodwill, excuse me. And then Troy Baker after that.
You know, I, I don't have a prepared statement. I'm here as an employee of the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board, because I feel like, I've been here 17 years. I've worked my way up. I've watched people grow. There are people that started below me, and they are now above me in rank, which I am fine with. I don't, that's a leadership decision, and it makes sense to me. Maybe I wasn't good enough to be a crew leader, this person wasn't. I don't question anybody's judgment on that. But what I'm saying is, when you're trying to take away a bid from somebody, and some of us have worked here, like me, 17 years, all I have is my seniority. My bid is the only thing I really have. I can choose where I want to work. And I'm not in maintenance, I'm in forestry, my bid is pretty well protected. But I understand that there are some people who work in maintenance, yeah, they get to go to this special park. Maybe it's because they've worked there 26 years. They're 62 years old, and they're just trying to make it to retirement. And you want to like, tell this person, he's worked his butt off for the organization for all these years? We're going to take that away from you, and you're going to go, you're going to go friggin' blow driveways and park paths and fix this fence? The guy's 62 years old.
Thank you, Troy.
Let him work at his park.
Troy Baker, is Troy Baker here? Yep, please, Troy. And immediately following, we will have our public hearing. Please go for it.
Thank you for letting me have the opportunity to speak. I am a parkkeeper at the Minneapolis Park Board. I work in South Central Minneapolis. I live in the East Phillips neighborhood. I have been here for a year. I came up here working from the park system in Texas. I also have a degree in sociology. I studied social structures and organizations for five years. And my experience here has left me feeling very heartbroken with the park board. I feel like it is one of the most dysfunctional organizations I've been a part of. Coming into this job, back in Texas, we, before I even was at the worksite, I was given a really thorough onboarding process, given a thick packet of information, everything about the job. I had one stable location, and I was able to build relationships with the community. Coming here, I was immediately given, like, given, showed up at this park at 5:00 AM in the dark, I showed up, I was immediately given a weed whip, being like, go cut some weeds. And I'm like, okay, I'm new to this city, I've never been here before, I don't know what's going on. I find out a year in, I'll be working weekends for like five years, that we're also getting shafted on our pay, on our bidding system. And all I'm asking for is stability in location, stable wages, and possibly even restructuring of the social structure of the park board, because I feel like there's dysfunction between the people that work at HQ and the management, and the people that are actually at the parks on a daily basis. I feel like we have different views, different perspectives, and different orientations. I want a community-led, a community-based organization, not, I don't want to run the park board as if it's a corporation. And I feel like that's the direction that this contract is taking, and I don't think that's right. It needs to be a grassroots-led organization, especially with the climate that Minneapolis is in, after COVID and George Floyd, like, it doesn't make sense to me, so, thank you.
Pause the open time, and we will now go directly into the public hearing, oh, excuse me, the public hearing, right? We have a public comment as well after this. Anyway, thanks to all of you who want to share your thoughts and ideas with us during tonight's public hearing. Before we start, the committee will, the board would like to provide an abbreviated version of the public hearing rules. All individuals wishing to speak can sign up prior to the start of the public hearing today. And the board, Park Board, will be calling on the people on the sign up list only. If you have not signed up to testify yet, please do so with, the entrance, okay. This public hearing will be a time allocated by us, by myself, and that will be two minutes per person. Please watch the timer up here to be considered of others here to speak and stay with your allotted time. During the public hearing, public testimony will be given without debate and only clarifying questions from the board will be allowed. We will not tolerate discriminatory and/or harassing words directed at anyone. So please ensure that all comments you make tonight comply with the policy. The board made the decision many years ago to operate under Robert's Rules of Order. Under Robert's Rules of Order, the ceding of time to another person is not allowed, so only those signed up to speak may only speak for their own allotted amount of time. We also request that each speaker provide his or her name and address. As the president, I will call for the additional testifiers at the end of the hearing, three times before the public hearing is closed. We have six people who want to speak to us tonight. The first one is Mitchell Hanson, and then we have Gunjan Chartavong. I'm not sure I pronounced your name right, but if you step forward, Mitchell, and then Gunjan, if you can come, be ready.
Hi, thank you. My name is Mitchell Hanson, Community Outreach Director for Harrison Neighborhood Association. Well, NPRB's tree removal requirement aims to serve the goal of improving the health of the city's tree canopy. In practice, it has created an immense burden for low-income and fixed-income homeowners. In Harrison, we've specifically seen Black senior homeowners hit hardest by this requirement. With the massive rise in the cost of living and steep property tax increases, many Harrison homeowners are barely able to afford to stay in their homes as it is. While the cost of removing a tree may be inconsequential for some, for these residents, it means having it means having to forego basic necessities like food and medication, not being able to make much-needed health and safety repairs to their homes, or potentially losing their homes altogether. Since first becoming aware of the tree removal requirement this past summer, HNA has tried to help impacted residents navigate the program. From HNA's perspective, the program is not tenable in its current form, and solutions are needed to address the inequitable and overly burdensome impact it's having on a community's most vulnerable residents. We observe the following issues with the program. One, there's a wide discrepancy between the price that non-MPRB contracted companies are bidding and charging for tree removal versus the price charged on the NPRB contracted companies. On average, HNA's documented the price of NPRB contractors to be two to three times as much as non-MPRB contractors. Two, most low-income homeowners do not, most of, sorry, most low-income homeowners do not have the resources to pay for the tree removal costs upfront or utilize the cheaper removal option. Thus, they are automatically charged the higher NPRB contractors cost, which ends up on their property taxes in the form of a special assessment. NPRB did not notify residents of the hardship payment options available to them when it was issued in the tree removal letters. It was only through the work of HNA staff that these payment options became known. The payment option information has only recently been added to the NPRB website, and the application forms are still not available online. NPRB payment options, a five-year, 10-year loan with 3% interest or a payment with the cost paid at a time of sale, still present a financial burden that most of these homeowners cannot afford. In furtherance, for the more equitable and less burdensome impact, we respectfully ask NPRB to take the following actions. One, halt the tree removal program until a source of funding can be identified or created to assist low-income homeowners in covering the cost of tree removal. Two, waive the special assessments for low-income homeowners who have already been charged for tree removal and assessed to 2022. Spare with me just two more points. Three, work with impacted homeowners, the community, and relevant government partners to create a more equitable solution that improves the health of the city's tree canopy without placing an undue burden on residents. And four, reimburse homeowners for the cost paid out of pocket prior to being notified of payment options associated with the NPRB contracted special assessment pathway. We look forward to working with NPRB to craft a solution. Thank you for your time and consideration.
And Mitchell, if you have a copy of that, or if you want to forward a copy to us and everything, we can then distribute it to all the commissioners and everything.
Well, yes, it might be a little longer, so I had to kind of rush it in there.
That's okay, we certainly understand. But Dawn right here, who's walking that direction, for any of you who happen to have a copy that you'd like to make copies for us to be shared with the commissioners, please do so. Gunjan, and then after that is Felicia Perry.
My name is Gunjan Chantavong. I am a high school student from Patrick Henry, and I came here today for Mitchell, because yesterday I attended a Green Zone meeting at Farview Park, and he voiced his concern for an hour there. And what I have learned and listened from the conversation is that there's not a lot of clear communication with the city, with the Park Board, and with, like, the residents of North Minneapolis about the tree removal. And I believe that it shouldn't be like the responsibility of private homeowners to take out these trees that have been there for years. Roxanne over there, her mother just moved into their new house a week ago, and now they're being noticed to take, to get rid of the tree. And that's like, what? They shouldn't be able to do that. Awesome. Well, what I just want to say is, I came here to research about how the city and how everything works, because as a youth, I just don't know. I just look around, and I see all these things happening, but unless I really come up here and look and notice, I can see, like, there's a lot of confusion, there's a lot of, like, what's really happening? What I want is clarity. I want people to know that, like, I don't know, you're not alone, but it's just unfair. It's just unfair.
Felicia, then after that is Roxanne O'Brien. Felicia?
My name is pronounced Felicia Perry. I am a longtime Northsider. I grew up in North Minneapolis. I've owned my home on Lindell Avenue, right across the bridge here, for the last almost thirteen years. So I'm a homeowner, I work, live, and fellowship in North Minneapolis. And I was invoiced for thousands of dollars for the removal of two trees, or some of us call them relatives, off of my property. Sad about that, I was given a two-day notice from a tree company, and they were telling me that my electricity would be turned off. I didn't know about any of this until that two-day notice. They claimed they mailed it a week before, but it was posted on my door two days before they showed up. I was able to take some time away from work in order to make phone calls to just keep the electricity on. I didn't know, didn't have any access to any information or anything for any other choice in the matter, even though I had heard about this, what, like, two or so years ago, gotten a notice. Points I want to point out is that you all have known about this problem with ash bor since at least 2010, and further burdening residents shouldn't be the only plan in that amount of time. I've been intimidated even before this meeting by Ms. Julie and Mr. Ralph. They pulled me to the side into a room, questioning me about why, what I wanted to comment about, et cetera. My neighborhood seems to be disproportionately affected, so neighbors with fixed incomes and struggling, that are struggling, as well as those of us who are underemployed with wages not matching inflation, it's expensive for us. I don't have four or so thousand dollars for trees that, thank you.
Thank you. Roxanne, and then I think it's Anuki.
That's my mother. I brought her here today, so I want her to tell most of her story, as well as many black women have came here today, because ironically, this seems to be impacting black people the most. I've heard really scary things that were getting quoted, double the pricing of these assessments. And due to these concerning issues, my request today is that you guys expand, extend the comic period for this issue around these emerald ash trees. Your process, we have lots of questions. We want to know who's in charge. I believe this to be an inequitable policy and process, and I believe the Park Board to be responsible. I also wanted to say some of the concerns that have been coming up have been trees were assessed, people asked for extensions, contractors said that trees close to power lines needed to be cut, folks were asked to sign forms. When people didn't sign forms, these companies went and cut the trees anyway. There are no before-and-after pics. Trees are assessed by Park Boards. I've heard names Jeff and maybe Dave. The cost of removal is anywhere from $2,000 to $7,000. Another concern that I'm hearing is, Park Board is raising significant amounts of money by selling carbon offsets based on the existence of maintenance of the urban trees it is planting and maintaining, so some of this money should be used to help low-income Northsiders pay for the ash tree removal. And the organization running the carbon offset programs, Green Minneapolis, is funded by folks with means, the Marbrook Foundation, the Royal Tower Foundation, the Brown Family Foundation, the Winslow Capital. Perhaps these groups can also help individuals and can help with these assessments. Maybe the county can also pitch in. Whatever the situation, I think this also needs to be investigated. I'm not sure what's going on.
Thank you. Muki? Okay, and then after that is Melissa, and then we have one more addition after that.
Good evening, Minneapolis Park Board and Recreation Board members. My name is Amake, and on January 8th, 2021, I did a thing. At seventy years of age, I bought a house, my forever home. I moved to Minneapolis in 1987. I lived in North Minneapolis, I'd say thirty-five of those years if I wasn't traveling. I was a teacher in North Minneapolis, so I know lots of families, I know lots of situations, but this one is befuddling. A week after I moved in, I see a man outside in my backyard, kind of behind a tree. I don't know if he's hiding or he's urinating, but I investigate it. And I go out and I ask him, what is he doing? He just says, oh, I'm looking at this tree. Then he scratches on the tree, then he paints the tree, and I'm going, what's this all about? The tree has Ashbor syndrome. Trees have Ashbor syndrome. Woodpeckers don't, will come and peck on the tree, they'll get the bugs. So I was, you know, said, okay, I know about, a little bit about this, let's investigate it. Fast forward nine months later, took nine months to get this tree down. I had bids from anywhere from $3,000 to $11,000. I had contractors who told me to go next door to ask the neighbors could they use their property to move equipment to get something out of my yard. XL Energy did have to come in and take off the power lines, but that also impacts the entire neighborhood. You take off the, you cut off the power lines on your neighbor's house. So the neighbors to the right north of me are older than I am, house full of people, and they couldn't eat all day. We're worried about our food's defrosting. We're worried about, you know, keep eating, and then people are on medicines, and people need to eat regularly. What I want to say to you, this is a problem. This is a predator, predator problem. As soon as you move in, somebody's swooping down trying to take your wealth. You cannot keep taking our wealth from us. We're doing the best that we can, and we need you to do something about this. Please investigate this trend. It is a practice, it is a system, and it's connected to many, many other systems.
Melissa Newman, and then after that, I'm not sure if I'm going to pronounce this, I think it's, is it Erica? Anyway, Shalafard Dos Santos, I'm sorry. Melissa?
Hello, I'm Melissa Newman, fourth ward resident, and for the last sixteen years a homeowner. And since I've been in my home, I've been asked to cut down about seven trees due to Dutch elm and ash bor. And just recently, I'd been asked to cut down additional three trees just past year. As a homeowner, I inherited these trees that were potentially planted by the city of Minneapolis at one point in time. So now we're responsible for cleaning up the mess. You know, I understand that there's these bugs and things of that nature, but I do believe that my trees were savable. In their manner, I received a letter from you guys reflecting what we needed to do, given a 60-day notice. You know, at that time, you know, I don't have the funds to be able to cover thousands and thousands of dollars of trees. And again, with my experience of being in these homes for the last sixteen years, is detrimental. This is a hardship that you're placing upon homeowners that are paying property taxes to help continue the city to thrive. And most days, I had two trees, three trees on the same property line, same power line. One tree was deemed $800, and that was 20 inches in diameter. The other two trees were deemed $2,700, and they were 16 inches in diameter. The company that you guys created, the special bid, they were also very hazardous with creating a crane in the tree over my home, when they could easily have been on each side of my neighbors' properties and had direct access to cutting down those trees. They especially, they put on a special assessment on the trees, and no one was able to tell me with the Forestry Department what the special assessment meant and what it was defined as. I, in 2021, came and spoke with you guys in September to review this particular case. I've sent emails to Jeremy Brack, Ralph Severt, Jeffrey Everson, excuse me, Evenson, and I had an inspector come to my home, and he still couldn't tell me what the reasoning was. And then, and then I waited for the elections to hit, and then I also sent the email, the same email that I just continued the circulation with, and the last name to Becca Thompson and Alicia Smith was directly on there as well. I haven't received any notification regarding this manner since November of early '21, because I feel that myself was gouged in wages. If they had charged $800 per tree, it was still overinflated by $1,000. And at the same time, we're left with these stumps that is additional $200 bucks per stump plus to do, to continue to clean up. And while these roots are growing underneath my ground, potential damaging my foundation to come or my neighbors, it's a continuous issue. It doesn't go away.
If you can wrap it up, please.
Say it again?
If you can wrap it up.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah.
But I would like a little extra.
No, I'm sorry.
This is a situation I've been dealing since 2021, you know, with the same Park Board.
Do you have a written copy there?
And, you know, I've written a lot of emails. I've written a lot of emails.
No, but if you want to.
But everything is a cause and effect for homeowners, and this affects people's monthly mortgage payments. If they are escrowing this stuff, you know, so when you have a particular fixed income, you're not scheduled to take on this debt. Just this last year, my mortgage has increased by almost $300 due to these trees that I've having to assess on my property, because I do not have the funds just to up and write a check to someone within the next month. The $80 charge, 3% interest tacked on for a five-to-10-year span over a period of time, this is crazy. I challenge you to look at your assessments in the last 10 years to see exactly how many homes and people have foreclosed had assessment property, had assessments on there with these trees, and or other assessments that has been occurred from the city of Minneapolis. You know, there has to be something. Right after I spoke, there was a resolution that was created. I don't have the direct numbers for the resolution, but Latricia Vito was on here, and she sent it to me, and saying that there's something in the works, a financial works, and now we're in 20, almost 2023, and still nothing has come to play. And I do not, I do believe that just simply as a homeowner, you should be eligible. There should not be financial brackets placed around these types of things, and, you know, at the same time, you know, it's a cause and effect to everything, and we should not be liable for these inherited type of trees.
Melissa, what I was suggesting is, if you want to give a copy to Dawn, then she will distribute it to all of us. We appreciate all your statement, but we do have another person who also wants to speak.
Certainly. And what I was suggesting is, I've sent emails with the same written statement to a lot of people that are on the Board and the Committee of the Forestry, and it's been on deaf ears. So giving it again, it's going to do what? Go on deaf ears. So, you know, and then North News, they had just had an article talking about 940 trees are going to be removed this, this year, and more than half of that is just Northside, 246 and 55411, and 229 and 55412. This is crazy. You know, is it, is just Northside the focus? You know, even after we lost hundreds of trees due to the hurricane, I mean, the tornado in 2011, we still have more? I challenge you to see, what is the other parts of the city, the more richer parts of the city, what do those trees look like? You know, and at the same time, the inspectors, they never came to my property, they never researched bark, they never took samples, they never took pictures. I have pictures of before and after showing that this is not a special assessment when you use my neighbor's property to gain access to.
Thank you, Melissa, seriously.
So for those that, I challenge you.
I need to move on to the next person.
See what, what is the cause and effect of, and the foreclosure status of these homeowners.
I appreciate your comments. Alika?
I know that I need to be addressing the Park Board.
You can talk to the microphone there.
I would feel like we should all be talking together about this. And my name's Erica Schlegel Dos Santos. We do a lot of tree planting on the North Side. We have a spot where the tornado blew the liquor store down, and we plant trees there, we have tree beds there. We have planted a lot of trees. This notion, and I also worked for Metro Blooms, that deals with the question of emerald ash bor. We understand that it's, that it's something threatening to our health, but our health and well-being as water protectors, as our trees' water protectors, is that this issue of emerald ash bor, there's a potential for a biological solution to this. That's one thing. The biological remediation is considered too expensive, but when you hear the kinds of fees that are happening, I would beg to differ. So I encourage the Park Board to look into a biological remediation, and also, we need to blur the line between what the commons are with a capital C and what the commons, what private property is, because it's being blurred when we're being assessed for trees that are being taken off of private property. It's, we're in a climate crisis, we're in a water crisis, and then we're in a perma crisis. So my other question is, why is there not a 10-to-1 replacement of these trees on private property? And how do we go about doing that? We planted a children's forest at North Commons with 40 trees, and I just want to point out to you that the city of Minneapolis made a big mistake where they put in what was intended to be a bio-retention pond on the corner of, where the baseball park is, on the corner of 16th and Knox, Knox, Logan, Morgan. And they made a terrible mistake. I happened to be on my bike riding by. I was the wrong person to talk to the inspector at the time. Her name is Win-Win. The engineer's name is Nathan. No calls back. The tree, they went down too far. The company that they hired to take the tree, to create this thing around the tree, didn't know anything about trees. They damaged the tree severely, and the Park Board was able to come there the next day and remove that tree. I want to know how much that organization, the TIVIC organization, was charged for that tree removal based on the mistake that they made. And then the last thing I'd like to say is that you investigate that corner, that tree basically. Those trees are being watered by a private homeowner because we're not able to get the help that we need to water them. So a private homeowner does it, we volunteer to water, and we plant all over the place. We need to step it up. We need our trees. How can we heal them without cutting them down? One. Two, how is the city responsible for mistakes that they make financially? And three, how can we fund residents and people in our community with the highest cumulative health, health impact in the whole state of Minnesota to absorb the cost of this and reforest those private properties? It's on all of us. We need these trees. It is our health and well-being, air, water, and soil, biological remediation for emerald ashbore. Please, it takes some money to do that.
Thank you, Erica.
Let's invest in saving ourselves.
I appreciate it. I'm going to close then the public hearing right now, and then I'm going to open up our public comments regarding our budget. Just for everyone to know, there are no speakers, so I'm not feeling that I need to go through the rules, but I'm just announcing if anybody is here to speak to the budget. Anybody here to speak to the budget? Anybody here to speak to the budget? On that, then I will close the public comment, and we will move back then to, I can't even remember where we were. Oh, yes, I think we were, we are already finished with comments of the superintendent's report, so I'm now going to go to reports of appointees to outside boards, commissions, or committees. Any commissioners have anything they want to share? Oh, my goodness, the lights just went on. Okay, Commissioner Benny.
Thank you, President Forney. This morning, I attended an audit committee meeting at City Hall. And just a quick update, the state auditor that was there just presenting kind of high level, the state audit results, and the documents were filed both for the city and the park board, actually, with the city auditor, the city internal auditor. It's really just a formality, basically. The other thing is the, Ryan Patrick is the, the director of internal audit. He's being elevated for 90 days to the interim new city auditor role as a result of the government structure change because they have to sort of build out another section of his, that department. So he'll be in that role for 90 days as they seek to fill it and build that out. And then the other thing is there was a presentation on department-managed grants, and I believe the park board was subject to that review in a past phase of this. So that's the report. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, Commissioner Elper.
Thank you, President Forney. This Monday, I attended the planning commission meeting on behalf of the park board as, as your representative. The agenda included a variance for a deeply affordable housing project from Hennepin County in northeast Minneapolis near the U of M campus. The project would convert a former hotel to serve people making about $24,000 or less per year. Deeply disturbing assertions were made by members of the public representing fraternities and sororities and a neighborhood church. They asserted that future tenants, and I'm not kidding you, would be rapists and criminals. This is not okay. This is, this is wrong. I want to share some statistics with you about who deeply affordable housing serves. 35% of people making less than 30% AMI, area median income, are in the labor force. 3% are students, 34% are seniors, and 21% are disabled. They are members of our society, just like me or you, and are deserving of quality affordable housing, which this project would provide. Furthermore, I want to share with you that a motion was made and passed, a five to four, to delay this project based on false information that certain government entities and neighborhood organizations had not been engaged. They had. The end of, result of these actions was to delay much-needed affordable housing in our city. As I've mentioned previously, to all of you, encampment issues are not over in and around our park system and our city. I will continue to hold up the value of housing as a human right as your representative on the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports? Thank you. We will move then to the consent business agenda. Anybody want to pull anything for discussion, otherwise we can take a motion?
I'll move resolutions 2022-309, 2022-310, and 2022-304.
Second? Thank you. Okay. Not seeing any lights or anything. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Those resolutions pass, and so on to standing committees. We have the planning committee. Who's reporting on that?
On behalf of the planning committee, I would like to move resolution 2022-252, resolution concurring with the federal transit authority's de minimis finding under section 4F of the Transportation Act of 1966 for the E-line Bus Rapid Transit Project adjacent to and within Minneapolis Chain of Lakes Regional Park, Gateway Park, and Tower Hill Park.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. Commissioner Musich, and then, yes, Cliff?
Thank you. We received a new version of this distributed to us, and I'm wondering if staff are looking for us to amend the version that's in the budget. So if someone can provide a little bit of clarification on that, I would appreciate it. I don't know who the appropriate staff person would be.
Secretary Ringel?
It looks. (laughing).
President Forney, Commissioner Musich, I believe, yes, we are looking for that.
Okay. So this is, to the best of my knowledge, not provided in advance, so we would need to suspend the rules in order to make this. No, no. Okay. Someone's going to give me more information. Looks like Secretary Ringold.
Go for it.
President? President Forney, Commissioner Musich, I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question. There is an amendment in front of you tonight for resolution 2022-256. It was actually posted along.
256?
Or start, 252, excuse me. It was included in the packet last Friday.
Okay.
So it was.
That's why it wasn't in the email we got today.
Exactly.
Got it.
So it was there for you. It's a stat, staff are requesting this as the alternative to the one that is currently in, was currently on the agenda in part, we can't change those things without you amending them.
Sure. So the, the version in the packet is the same as the version that I, that I received a paper copy of this evening.
President Forney, Commissioner Musich, yes, we just wanted to make sure you had a paper version of it at the, at the dais.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate it. I would like to make a motion to amend the resolution in front of us to match the version that was included in our packet and that we had before us this evening. Can I get a second?
Second? Second? Okay, hear that? Okay. Any discussion on the matter? I believe Commissioner Thompson, not Commissioner Beck.
Thank you, President Forney. I, I don't have a discussion necessarily on, on amending. It's more just the content of either version, just the whole idea. So would you like me to ask that about that now?
Why don't we speak to the amendment first? So Commissioner Schaefer, did you want to speak to the amendment?
I just was wondering if staff could give kind of a high-level overview. I know Metro Transit is here as well. Kind of of where this project started and where we ended up with this amendment, I think would be helpful for the commissioners to hear.
Emma? Again?
We, President Forney, Commissioner Schaefer, we do have a presentation, and it sort of goes through the whole thing. Would you like the presentation, or do you want us to kind of? Okay.
Please.
Great. All right. So this presentation is for, staff is requesting approval of the 4F de minimis finding, and we have Adam Smith here, who's going to do the, the bulk of the presentation tonight. I'm kind of just here to introduce the idea. So improving our transit connections does meet one of our comp plan goals, which is expanding our focus on health equity. We aim to provide a number of different acts, ways to get to our park system, and so improve BRT connections is absolutely one of those ways. So I'll invite Adam here to say a little bit more about the project.
Welcome, Adam.
Thank you, President Forney and commissioners. Just wanted to give a little bit of background here in terms of where we are in project development for the E-line. So we've been working through the planning phase for the last couple of years, working on recommendations for station and platform locations through an interagency technical advisory committee with, and as of June, the Metropolitan Council approved our final corridor plan, really kicking off the, the design phase for the project. So this is the, the point where we are developing detailed design plans, continuing to work with our interagency staff partners to review those plans as we, as we move along. This is also the phase in the project where we will identify any required easements along the project. So that's expected to go through the end of next year, construction starting in 2024, and E-line service scheduled to begin in 2025. So today's action is really focused on the three station locations that you read that are adjacent to parks along the corridor, University and Malcolm, Hennepin and Gateway, and Richfield Road, and Bede-Makaska South stations. So just a really quick overview of these locations and what is being proposed here at University and Malcolm Station, adjacent to Tower Hill Park. So as you can see, this is a really early design concept, I'll say, but based on this, the platform is constructed within the public right-of-way, but as we get towards final design, there may be some need for temporary occupancy or use of the, the parkland behind that green boundary that you have here. So that is, that is one of the locations. The second location is the northbound platform at the Hennepin and Gateway Station, adjacent to Gateway Park. And here, again, the platform itself will be within the transportation right-of-way, but as part of the construction, there's, again, those limits where they are anticipated to go behind the park parcel for a portion of that project during the construction phase. And then here, I might ask Emma to just speak a little bit to the master plan consistency review process.
So we did receive some questions from commissioners around specific view sheds related to how the, is this north, northbound stop?
Yep.
Would impact some of the view sheds that are, some of the things that are proposed in the master plan. And we determined that actually this is a really good location based on some of the future additions, which includes a fountain and a coffee kiosk. Also, the station's going to be generally transparent, so you, you still will have view sheds kind of through the station location as well.
Thanks, Emma. And then the third location, Richfield Road and Bede-Makaska South. So in this case, the transportation right-of-way is not distinguished from the park boundary, so essentially these platforms will be constructed within the parkland. And so this is a location where, you know, because of the proximity to the lake, you know, we did receive some comments. And in addition to the kind of typical avoidance and minimization measures for this type of project, which I'll go through briefly, at this location, we are going to evaluate enhanced stormwater management techniques and also design, develop a new design for our real-time next-trip sign displays to basically reduce the amount of light emanating from those signs. So again, you know, as part of our just overall evaluation, the main direct effects of this project are going to be the temporary disturbance on parkland during construction, some limited areas of additional pavement, an associated stormwater runoff, the potential for limited vegetation and tree removal, and then that additional light associated with the sign displays. So during the design process, we'll be looking to minimize impacts to vegetation wherever we can, again, evaluate the site-specific stormwater management strategies near Bede-Makaska, of course, retaining safe, convenient access for sidewalk and trail users, not precluding those planned improvements, and then developing and implementing the new design for sign displays to reduce light. Beyond the design phase, then, there are additional measures that we take, including following practices for tree protection during construction, completing a tree impact survey, and continuing to work with park board staff around mitigation options where we can't avoid impacts, and then continuing to use best practices with respect to application of salt for winter maintenance. And then I just really wanted to quickly reiterate, you know, future park board staff involvement as we develop design through agency meetings, staff review at key design milestones, and then again, coordination as we get into the final design phase with respect to any necessary easements on park board-owned land. And with that, I'll pass it back to Emma.
I'll just note also that Steph was really excited about Metro Transit's idea of looking into a more bird-friendly next-trip light for the, the next-trip, what is it, station?
Sign.
Sign, thank you. So we're really excited about that addition.
Commissioner Thompson?
I have some questions regarding the Richfield Road stop. Anecdotally, I was on Penn yesterday on the north side, which is where the new C-line goes through, and it creates bottlenecks in a lot of places, and there were emergency vehicles that needed to get through. It was rush hour traffic. There was nowhere for anyone to go. Buses had been blocking either direction, and cars, like literally, were trying to pull onto the sidewalk to try to let the ambulance through. It looks from the picture that there's a similar situation at Richfield Road. Can you explain to me how we have considered, how Metro Transit has considered that situation?
Sure. I would say that at this type of location where there's a single lane in each direction, you're really not going to see too much different as you would today with buses operating along Richfield Road. So a bus would be pulled over to the curb, and, you know, emergency vehicles would be able to pass. So, you know, in this case, there is unlikely to be any sort of new median or anything like that that would obstruct emergency vehicles from passing a stopped bus.
But it, but if, the way that the, my question is, the two terminals are exactly opposite each other, so if buses are stopped at the same time and cars are backed up behind them, is there any extra space?
That's something that would be very unlikely to happen.
It happened just yesterday.
Yeah, okay. Well, I would say, you know, it's something that we can certainly look at as we move into design here, but that's, sorry.
So then, yeah, so then furthering, looking into the design would carve away more park space, correct?
Not necessarily. You know, part of the, the design, final design configuration can be to look at, you know, in more detailed terms, how the, the platforms are configured to ensure that, you know, buses would not be blocking emergency vehicles.
I have one other question. I'm curious who can answer. What, what, what happens? I'm looking at our resolution. It says whereas on June 6th, blah, blah, blah. FTA said it's intent to make a de minimis determination. If we don't, if we don't approve this, what, because we're, we're concurring with the idea, right? So what would be the next step? And I don't know if anyone in the room can even answer that. Is it an eminent domain kind of thing?
President Forney, Commissioner Thompson, if the board fails to concur with this particular concept under 4F, then it would trigger either additional consultation, or it might trigger Metro Transit to choose to modify its route to, to sort of, I guess, not touch parkland at all. Staff has been working with Metro Transit on this particular station location because we understand from our policy documents, there's some benefit to having that transit interconnection.[1800.53] interconnection with the parks. But the failure to concur would essentially mean that the project could not be built this way, and would have to be either redesigned, or perhaps pieces of it would be eliminated in order to not touch parkland.
Has there been any other discussion points about where a similarly placed, like within like a half-mile on either end, stop would be rather than this kind of bottleneck space? I mean, I know the whole, the whole area is pretty tightly wound, but I'm just curious if that was considered.
Yeah, there were a number of different potential platform locations that were reviewed and developed, again, as part of that corridor planning process. But the approval of the corridor plan is really our policy direction from the Metropolitan Council to place within kind of the intersection quadrant where these platforms are going to be. But yes, there were alternative locations that were looked at throughout the corridor.
Thank you. I did have one other procedural question. Is there, is there a way that we could, if we amended this, to remove the Richfield Road thing and approve the other two? Is that something within our scope at this moment, or is it an all-or-nothing plan for the E-line?
Director Aragon.
Am I saying the right E-line, right? Yeah.
President Forni, Commissioner Thompson, the Board can't functionally direct the design work of Metro Transit.
Okay.
So your choice as a Board is to approve what they're proposing with the mitigations that are proposed, or to not do so. There were concerns raised previously that we then did go back and work with Metro Transit again, and the result of that is the staff amendment that's before you. But to amend a project from the dais as you've suggested, we would be concurring with a project that doesn't really exist in Metro Transit's eyes, if that makes sense?
That does, yeah. Thank you. Thank you. That answers my question. I appreciate it. Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Sorry, I don't know who was first, but I'll say, Commissioner Abene.
Thank you. One question that I have had since this first came before us is, there's a stop on the Richfield Road one. There's a stop that's further to the east existing, and our master plan, I believe, talked about a new crossing there. And I'm wondering if that stop will be consolidated with this location, because it's not the greatest crossing.
President Forni, Commissioner Abene, based on past practice, yes, that is what we would do. I'd say, just in terms of timing, the final decisions about stop consolidation wouldn't occur until closer to implementation. But certainly based on past practice, when we have a local stop that is that close, we would consolidate them such that local service would use the BRT station, which would include, you know, the sort of the upgraded marked crossing.
Okay, that's super helpful. So the E-line's going to do its thing. It's going to cruise through, but that means that the local, what number is it? Is it a six? It's a six, right? Okay. The six will stop there as well. So that would also be then, this location's a little weird to me for a BRT stop. I mean, I think it's cool. I like picture people with like beach stuff in the summer, but it is also maybe a transfer location from local to E-line?
Certainly could be, yeah. And I think, you know, one of the biggest sort of planning considerations when this section of the corridor was being looked at is kind of the large gap that you would be left with, based on where the stations on either end of this location would be. So Sheridan and 39th, if I'm remembering correctly, and then Hennepin and 36th to the northeast. So pretty big gap. So, you know, we felt, again, that it's an important thing to be able to provide transit options to parks. And that was one of the reasons that this station was proposed.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Alper?
Thank you, President Forni. I'm really excited about this project, and I really hope that Commissioners will vote in support of the, concurring with the 4F determination. You know, for me, I think about this stop as, and I have scribbled a bunch of notes, you know, helping get kids outside. There's a national program to help connect people who live in cities with parks. I think about people who live in Upper South Minneapolis, you know, maybe they live in Phillips, maybe they live in Ventura Village, you know, options to get around like this. You know, high school students already have free bus passes. They could use their bus pass to get to Bidet-Makaska. I think that's really exciting. I think it would be a real loss to move the stop and to push for that, this particular one. I think it's in a good place, and I would comment on the fact that it's two lanes. That's a common practice that I've seen in transit, where you have the stop be placed in, basically, you don't make the bus pull over because it loses time. And as, as I think we all know here, time is money. It makes it, well, although we do go very late in the evening, I must say. But just to say that it really slows down the bus to have that happen, and that's a very common practice with Bus Rapid Transit, to have it so that frankly, it's only a few seconds off of personal vehicle drivers' time when they're moving around. So I think we should think about, we are, as a Board, voting to increase access to our park system, increase the mobility of people who might not own cars. I'm really excited about this. I think it's a win-win, and I wish that we gave as much care and attention to perhaps, I would say, fairly non-functional pieces of pavement elsewhere in our system that maybe could be converted to green space. So, thanks.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes, first of all, I want to thank staff and Metro Transit for your hard work and discussion relooking at these questions that I raised, particularly the area around Gateway Park, and reassuring me that the fountain and the coffee kiosk were still good, not going to be compromised with this. So I really appreciate that extra detail. I just want to take one minute to reflect on our process around this resolution. And when important partners like our Metro Transit or City, Hennepin County, Met Council, want to use MPRB parkland for our public proj, for their public projects, I believe it's our job, as what we've done through this process, to advocate for the protection of our natural resources in our parks, which include minimizing land loss when we can, observing the habitat, the important habitat that corridor is between the lake and Lakewood Cemetery and Williamberry Woods, and recognizing that, as well as the water runoff in a location so close to our lake. So when I first requested that we put, I put forth some amendments that I later retracted, but with the idea of trying to slow us down, just a hair, Metro Transit wasn't then there, wasn't able to be there, just for that sense of advocacy for our parks. And that does not mean, and in that process, I was accused of being anti-transit. And I think that we as Commissioners can be strong on both of those things, right? That because you want to slow down and check out some of these things does not mean that you're anti-transit. And so I really am excited, you know, or anti-ADA ramps, or anti-public infrastructure as a whole. But that I see as unique to our role. And so I'm really proud of this process, and because now I feel like, for the first time, Metro Transit is beginning to realize that public infrastructure on parkland is maybe a little different than public right-of-way. And I appreciate these considerations being given and looking at, hey, is this neon sign the best situation? And we're looking forward to seeing the designs that you bring forward, and I just wanted to say thank you, and I'll be supporting this resolution.
I'm sorry that I haven't weighed in earlier than this, but I'm really concerned where this stop is on Richfield Road. I think I might be the closest Commissioner to this. It's kind of my backyard. First of all, I will be talking about it in Ps and Cs and everything. Just to the west of it, we're going to have a first, or we do already have first-ever barns dance, which means all stoplights will stop, okay? And that's when pedestrians are going to be walking across. How it impacts, anything that happens here, I'm not sure. I've not been around enough barns to know. But, that sounded weird. Anyway, but one of my concerns is, at this crosswalk that you're indicating, is there going to be a flashing light? I mean, is there going to be a way for pedestrians to, you know, indicate, you know, I want to walk across the street, and all, I mean, that's a real concern, because this is not a viable place for crossing. This is, this is like a highway here, because it's the only connection, seriously, you know, between the lakes, north and south. So is there going to be a flashing light, any of that option?
Thanks, President Forni. I think at this point in design, it's too early to say for sure what kind of infrastructure might be added here. I think, you know, certainly as we continue to work with our agency partners through the design development process, we're going to want to make sure that we are providing a safe crossing for pedestrians and, you know, safe access. So that's certainly something that we will continue to look at and discuss, you know, with the county, with the city, with the park board staff, as we work through the detailed design process for this station.
And really, seriously, go ahead, please, Emma, sorry.
I was just going to add, and that that crosswalk is also actually identified in the 2017 Bidet-Makaska Harriet Master Plan as well. So this crossing was actually first identified by the park board as a need, and then Metro Transit worked with us to actually line that up with the crossing that was in the master plan.
Thank you for that insight, because really, it's like, I do not remember that at all. And being that a little bit further east is where the trolley stop ends, you know, that to me seemed illogical. And I mean, like I say, I'm thinking probably too much, but it's like, there's a safe crossing at 26th and East Bidet-Makaska, and that to me seemed like a more logical place to have it. But please take all those things in consideration. I just have a real concern about the safety of people getting off of that bus and walking across over to the beach. So I'm really concerned, because this, this is more like a 45-mile-an-hour zone. Not intentional, but that's what most people, I think, are doing. So I'm really, really concerned. And like I say, somehow 36th and Bidet-Makaska seems like more logical, safer area, because there are lights there for crossing. So, and like I say, how the, what is it called? Pedestrian scramble or barns dance impacts it, I don't know enough about that. So it's over my pay grade. Yes, Commissioner Olson?
Yeah, just wanted to quickly express my support for this and this location. I will say, part of why roads can be more dangerous than they're supposed to be, and people drive more on them, is because we lack sort of pedestrian infrastructure like this that helps calm traffic. And so I would, as someone, I actually did just look it up real quick on Google. I think I beat you out by like .8 miles. I'm a little closer. And I use that all the time as well. So this is my backyard as well. And I quite often use that bike lane on my e-scooter. And you're right, I mean, people blast by you. And so I would actually appreciate having some of these kind of in-between-the-two lights, so people aren't just like, oh, there's no light, no light, boom, you know? And so, you know, I think there's some theory to either side of the argument, as long as we do have really good signage to make sure that drivers stop. I mean, people don't stop for crosswalks. It's frustrating. But that's all I just say. Thanks.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, President Forni. I just feel like I want to wax poetic for a second. I'm decidedly not anti-transit, and I also do have, in addition to concerns to parkland and concern to wildlife and concerns to the lakes, I have big concerns about safety on this particular site. You know, as a runner, as a cyclist who's gone around this lake hundreds of times, that is, it is probably the most activated with auto traffic part in all of our chain of lakes that I can think of. Maybe Cedar over by Lake Nacomas has similar kind of stuff, but I am concerned for pedestrians, and I think this, personally, I believe this exacerbates it rather than solves things at this present moment. So I still am not sure where I land on it, because I do appreciate transit and activating our parks, but I just felt the need to share that. The Penn Avenue that I was speaking of in Plymouth, near where I live, I'm out of time, but lots of crosswalks, still problems.
Thank you all. Don't see any more lights and everything, so all those, this isn't needing a roll call, is it?
President Forni, certainly the final will need.
Oh, that's right, we're in amendment.
But we're in the amendment. I don't know if the amendment needs a roll call.
Okay. So on the amendment, please, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the amendment moves. Then we move to the full resolution. Any questions to that? I don't see any lights. So on that, a roll call? Okay. Secretary, take the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
No.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Musich?
Aye.
Commissioner Mens?
Aye.
Commissioner Alper?
Aye.
Commissioner Abene?
Aye.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
President Forni?
No.
You have seven ayes, two nays.
Thank you. Okay, so we are on to unfinished business and to talk about the superintendent's recommended budget for 2023. So, any presentation peoples want? Any lights? I don't see any light. Oh, yay, okay. Commissioner Musich?
Thank you, President Forni. I just wanted to make my colleagues aware that I am working on an amendment to the budget to reallocate previously allocated funding in Minnehaha Falls Regional Park towards the purchase and installation of surveillance cameras for the parking lots in that park, where we have the largest levels of crime that are not violent crimes, but nuisance crimes to visitors to the park system. So those monies have previously been allocated to build a new parking lot, and I'll be proposing in my amendment to reallocate them for security measures to try to reduce crime in that area. So just wanted to let folks know I'm working on that, and that I, where I was trying to take the money from and where it would be going. So I got that going on. I'm also working with Commissioner Schaefer on what she had brought up last meeting in regards to environmental stewardship and the need to care for our natural resources. So, yeah.
Thank you for that alert. Commissioner Mens?
Thank you, President Forni. And Commissioner Musich, I was also wondering about that when I saw that in the questions. Are there, where are the other places that we have permanent security cameras? I know that when I've worked with Chief Ahado on some acute problems in Northeast, that we've positioned certain cameras, the mobile cameras. So I'm wondering about where, where are those permanent cameras at right now to prevent crime? Do we know? Do we have any? I mean, maybe this isn't a budget question, but it's coming up, and I feel like we're all here, and if we're going to have an amendment on it.
Welcome, Chief Ahado.
President Forni and Commissioner Mens, almost all of the surveillance cameras that we manage for the MPRB are attached to facilities. So our recreation centers, for example, for the most part, have built infrastructure with security cameras that are operational, and this organization has invested tremendously in that over the last several years, and we continue to do so. We do struggle, however, with especially regional parks outside of the footprint of a facility.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Director Weisman, is there anything that you needed to present? I'm sorry if I didn't ask that question right off.
President Forni and Commissioners, I will just remind you, I have the slide up. November 30th, we will have a public comment period for the recommended budget, and then the Administration and Finance Committee will adopt the 2023 tax levy and annual budget. So again, any amendments that would be coming forward, we will want to have them available and publicly provided, and spoke at this meeting on November 30th. As we move to full Board adoption on December 6th, is located at City Hall. We are in a conference room, and it's not We are in a conference room, and it's not publicized. So we would like to have all of our amendments discussed and voted upon publicly at the November 30th meeting.
Commissioner Elper.
Thank you. I appreciate your response to my questions, and I would like to ask if someone would mind walking me through the parking lot calculations. I asked if, just hypothetical question, if we were to raise every lot by a dollar, what would we gain in revenue? If you could just share your thoughts behind that, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. President Forni, Commissioner Elper. The question was posed, and I took a look at the question that you provided, and it's actually a little bit complicated because raising the rate by a dollar, kind of, there are so many follow-up questions to that, right? Are we talking about an hourly rate, a daily rate, an event rate, an early bird rate, an afternoon discounted rate? So based on a number of assumptions, I did some math and projected some revenue that was provided in response on a separate spreadsheet. But basically, if you assume that across the board, our hourly rate is around a dollar or $1.25 by, on average, across the park system in our pay locations, if we were to raise that hourly rate by about a dollar, it would double our revenue, and it would be a 100% increase in fee. Staff would request that if the Commissioners were to bring forth a direction to staff to raise rates, that instead of it being by a flat dollar amount, that it be by a percentage. Reason being that the machines and the apps work so a coin can make an impact on an increment of time. So if you were to walk up to the machine and you put in a quarter, you want that quarter to register something. And if the increments of pay do not match an increment that you could put a quarter in for, then you don't actually get anything until you put in more than one quarter, which is confusing for the customer. So we would request that if there was going to be direction to raise fees, that it would be done so in 25% increments, 25.50, 75, 100. That said, we already do have a board-approved fee schedule that ranges from, you know, low end, I think it's 25 or 50 cents, and high end in the, you know, dollars, you know, 15 and above. Previous boards have approved that fee schedule, and it allows staff throughout any given year to follow trends, to make adjustments without having to continue to come back to the board to ask to make those adjustments. If we see a need to increase turnover in a particular area because we've noticed that all of a sudden a lot becomes very saturated, we can incrementally raise those rates until we are forcing turnover, until we can see that there's been an impact where folks don't want to park there as long, or it's not as full as it was. We try to use those rates in that way and pay attention to the trends of parking in any given area. Another great example of why we would need that type of flexibility and why we're so appreciative that the board provided us with that, with that large range, is in an example anywhere near downtown where we have Minneapolis Park Board parking or near the U areas like that where there's going to be an adjacent pay parking option for folks. We want to be competitive, but we don't want to be so far out of that range that now folks are going to go, obviously, over to the cheaper area. So that's why staff a handful of years ago came to the board with the request to create that range. Now, there have been questions on, well, why such a low end? You know, why go all the way down to 25 cents or 50 cents? And the reason that we added, or, you know, requested this last budget cycle, so coming into 2022, was so we could do some testing, some experimentation of adding some pay areas in previously non-pay areas that seem to be a little bit more obscure without having to use the investment of purchasing a pay parking terminal, which comes in a kind of a high-dollar figure right now in today's market, somewhere between $7,000 and $8,000 just for that unit. But instead, using the payment app in some of these more obscure locations to see how it works. Are people going to continue to park here? If we notice that, why is this parking bay on West River Parkway always have cars sitting in it? Well, let's try it out, you know? Let's see what happens if we were to add 25 cents for an hour to pay or 50 cents and kind of do a little bit of experimentation there.
Thank you. I appreciate that detail. So I would like to just share the spreadsheet which you all have here, and I really asked this question to illustrate that, look, we could potentially have $894,670 of additional revenue. Now, granted, that was, it was a very hypothetical question, you know, that assumes things, a lot of assumptions, and I appreciate the background on those assumptions. But I bring it up because we're having to make difficult decisions about other fees that I think we would prefer not to raise that we are raising. So I would like to ask, I have a follow-up question. What percentage, because these are mostly regional parks, or many of them are, and I'm curious, what percentage of our visitors to regional parks are Minneapolis residents? Because we cannot charge different rates for residents and non-residents.
Commissioners, President Forni, Commissioner Elper, my colleague has informed me that it's approximately 60%.
Regional.
In the regional. The regional parks.
Go ahead. You can go ahead.
President Forni, Commissioner Elper, of course, what feels like a simple question is never a simple answer. So it's hard to nail down that exact number, but the regional system as a whole is predicated on 40% of the visitation being regional and 60% being local. So we do tend to assume, those numbers do generally align for the Minneapolis system. They don't as much for some of the other systems, but we generally assume that 60% of our visitation is local and 40% is regional.
Okay, thanks. What school does the Parade Sculpture Garden semester and school year permit serve?
Commissioners, President Forni, Commissioner Elper, the Blake School.
Okay, thanks. And what school does the Nicollet Semester and School Year Permit serve?
President Forni, Commissioner Elper, it is Deale-Sell.
Great, thanks. So I have an example here for you. Parade costs $4 a day. If you assume, so that's Blake, if you assume 165 days in a school year and divide the school year pass rate of $325 divided by 165, you get $1.97 per day. So that means we are giving Blake students and faculty a 50% discount off of what the general public, you know, like public school families pays. Meanwhile, public school students at places like Eden Prairie High School, which sit on land, that I would argue have much lower monetary values than Parade Parking Lot and Sculpture Garden, they pay $350 per year for a parking pass. So I think there's room in here to do different things, and I would urge us, you know, as we look to, you know, cities around the country that are acting boldly on climate change, are recognizing that more efficient parking policy and management is crucial to reducing driving demand and achieving broader climate health and livability goals. I just read something, Bloomberg, the next step, parking is, or the next step on climate action, parking reform. So, you know, I'm thinking about what options there are within the budget based on market rates and what our competitors, the city of Minneapolis, charge to make changes in this year's budget. Thanks.
Commissioner Musich.
Thank you, President Forni. Staff hasn't pointed this out yet, so I'm going to. Parking lots fall within our enterprise fund, and any fees that we increase in that location, we would have to raid the enterprise fund to supplement general fund activities where we're also raising fees. So passports have undertaken that practice, and it left us in a situation where we did not have the funding available that we needed to make the necessary investments in our enterprise activities. Our golf courses are a prime example of that. For the entire period in which they were very profitable for the institution, those monies were transferred out of enterprise and used to pay for recreational opportunities in the city. Our courses are in tough shape now, and they really need investment, and we don't have the money there to do it. So while I appreciate the desire to see less driving in the system, raising those fees doesn't achieve the goal of allowing us to reduce general fund fees. And if everyone would just give me one moment to make one additional point, the, do I have permission to go ahead? Thank you.
Please.
The large majority of people that I see parking at the pay lot at Nocomis, for example, are large families, people that likely would be very burdened by us increasing the cost of that parking. So I would like us to take that into consideration as we're thinking about increasing parking fees, because I don't want to see less people coming to our regional parks that live in the city because it's just too hard to get their whole family there. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Mens.
Thank you, President Forni. To continue on the parking issue, is, I guess maybe I've seen this, but I don't know for sure, do we have like a parking pass that people can purchase? And is there, I didn't see the fee structure on that, and it doesn't seem very generally available.
Commissioners, President Forni, Commissioner Mens, we do, we have an annual parking pass. There are a handful of options, regular pass, a second pass for a household, and then a senior pass and a second senior for a household. It's a program we've been doing for, gosh, 15 years plus, and it's very popular. We have patron parking lots that allow you to use that pass. Not all of our pay lots are patron lots, but many are. I would say roughly 85% of the pay lots would honor that annual parking permit. The fee is somewhere around $40 per car for an annual parking pass.
But the parade lot, the parade lot would not be like a patron lot. And then, like, what percentage of the parking income is those parking passes? And maybe, and maybe this is a question for, like, the budget for future, that you don't have to answer this right now, but what percentage of those parking passes are the income that we get from parking? And then also, what percentage of people who purchase parking passes are residents?
President Forni, Commissioner Mens, I don't have all of those numbers off the top of my head. I can certainly gather those for you, but generally, the parking permit program is not a large percentage of the revenue that we're talking about here. We have technology actually available to us, but we have not yet been able to implement it, just in this year, that will allow us to better track use of the annual parking permit because it will require folks with a parking permit to enter their license plate as payment, and then that will just, it will double-check that they have a permit, and that shows us paid. And by eventually implementing that technology, we'll have a really good baseline understanding of what the use is of the patron permit, and then we would be able to make some really good decisions around that. However, right now, we have a vacancy in the parking coordinating role, and because of that, we just don't have the bandwidth to implement that new program. I hope to do so very soon, if at all possible.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schaefer?
This is a budget question, non-parking, if we've moved away from parking.
Okay, I have a clarification on question number 14 in regards to my question about how can Commissioners help allocate more of our current regional funding dollars to non-capital expenditures? And when I asked that question, I was specifically thinking of non-capital, not necessarily rehab. I understand rehab is kind of considered maintenance, but I was thinking of in particular, you know, the dollars of our staff that are used to mow, plow, you know, graffiti removal, that kind of thing within our system. And the answer that was given was that ultimately the goal would be to grow the general fund allocation to this area. And so if we were to go that route, are we not then considering, I'm not sure who this is going to, I'm just sharing it, would this not be allocating more Minneapolis tax dollars to a regional system that is already supported significantly by our Minneapolis taxpayers? President Forni and Commissioner Schaefer, I also see Deputy Ringel has her light on, so I'll start, and you can add. So the general fund allocation comes from the Metropolitan Council. So when we said ultimately we would look to grow that amount.
Okay.
That's our legislative agenda about getting.
Thank you.
The 40% from the state in support of our regional system. I, yeah, I was thinking general fund, general budget. Thank you.
Did you get the answer to your question?
I did.
Okay. Marvellous. Any other questions? Oh, Director Arvidson.
Thank you for recognizing me, President Forni. I just want to call Commissioners' attention really quickly in the interest of transparency because sometimes in the midst of long lists of questions, it can get lost, that I've made some fairly significant changes to the regional CIP, as I had suggested in our very first meeting that I might. So you have a replacement regional CIP in there, which I guess technically at the end, that'll come forward as a staff-proposed amendment. Within that new sheet, I haven't highlighted every single change because, again, it's almost completely changed from before. So it's basically a replacement regional CIP. The reason for this is that the freshest estimates of the Parks and Trails Fund amounts actually show more money for us in 2024 and 2025, almost a million more dollars in '24 and almost $500,000 more in '25. So I've been able to put more projects in those years and sort of shrink the CIP back together a little bit after the lack of bonding. The ultimate result is that projects are more likely to be closer to their originally planned year, and also we're able to add some money to a project in 2028, which was not possible before. You'll recall, there were no new projects there. And the park that will get money in 2028 under this scenario happens to be the Minneapolis Chain of Lakes, which is the next park on the equity metric in terms of the investment. So I just wanted to make sure to point that out so that it doesn't look slipped in at the end, because it's a fairly large change from the CIP you were originally given.
Commissioner Musich.
Thank you, President Forni. If you want to stay up there, Director Arvidson.
Certainly.
So in looking at the regional CIP, and I'm looking at the dollar amounts, and I'm thinking about master plans and things I know are failing already, how much of the capital improvement funding for projects in the regional system is to replace, repair failing infrastructure?
President Forni, Commissioner Musich, a large part of it. So when we initiate a project that may be called plan implementation, we go and engage the community, and we ask community members in our, who use our park system, and we also ask internal staff members what really need to be our priorities with that amount of investment in that park. And quite often, both of those groups identify things that are broken and need rehabilitation. There are instances where we're building new infrastructure and new things, but there are several recent examples where we have dedicated almost an entire allocation to rehabilitation of a variety of things. I will note here, as I did in the answers to my questions, that it's always a little bit of a blurry line, too, and I will use one of the projects that was highlighted in the superintendent's report at Minnehaha Parkway and East 50th Street as an example. So we are realigning an intersection, making that safer. So that maybe is new, but it's also a parkway repaving of a small piece. It's a trail repaving, it's restriping and new signage. So it's also providing a rehabilitation element because now we don't have to do those things for 20, 30, 40 years. And many of our projects exist in that space, so it's hard to exactly say how much is rehabilitation and how much is like a new thing in a park, but a lot of the money goes toward upgrading and replacing worn-out facilities in the regional park system.
Thank you for helping add that little bit of clarity to what we're looking at. I appreciate it.
Not seeing any. Not seeing any light—or more lights, excuse me. Just a reminder that the questions are due on the 16th, okay? About the budget, okay? And then, if I have this correctly, if you have amendments to the budget, they are due noon the 29th, with our meeting being on the 30th. And the budget will then be in the Administration and Finance Committee, and I will be appointing all commissioners, so then you have the ability to bring forward your amendments. So with the idea that when we go to City Hall, we have all understood what it is we're in favor of. So that is—I guess—do I have anything else? No, I guess that was it. Okay. So moving on then to—oh, wait a second. No, that's not actionable. Okay, so we're on to the next resolution, okay? Somebody like to move the next resolution, 2022-313?
I can move 2022-313. It's a resolution assessing certain properties to defray the cost of removing diseased trees from private property during 2021 and 2022. Second?
Thank you. Okay, discussion on this? Any discussion on this item? Oh, we have a presentation, I guess. Thank you, Director Weisman, and it sounds like maybe Director Severt also might be joining us.
Good evening, President Forni and Commissioners. So before you is the resolution to assess properties for the cost of removing diseased and infested trees from private properties during 2021 and 2022. So as just a reminder, the Park Board has authority to do so through state statute, as well as our Code of Ordinances. Our process for tree removal—the trees, forestry marks a tree for removal, and the property owner is notified by mail that the tree must be removed. The property owner has the option to remove the tree themselves or have the NPRB contract for the tree removal. If the property owner doesn't remove the tree by the deadline provided, or they choose to have the tree removed by the NPRB, there are NPRB contracts for the removal of the tree. Once the tree is verified removed and the contractor has been paid for the removal, the NPRB Finance Department sends a billing notice to the property owner. The property owner can pay for the tree removal in full at that time with no interest added, and any remaining unpaid balance is levied as a special assessment against their property. Special assessments are levied annually. They are collected through Hennepin County and are normally levied over the five-year period with a 3% interest factor. The NPRB has two financial hardship options available to property owners. These financial hardship options are included as an insert in both the first billing letter as well as the second billing letter, and it is provided with the information to contact me directly to establish which one of the financial hardship options the property owner would want to consider. So the first financial hardship option is the same as the city of Minneapolis. It's the deferral program. There are criteria that you must qualify for—for the special assessment deferment. The second financial hardship option is that historically, our tree levied assessments have been levied over a five-year period, levied with a board-adopted resolution. We are now able to offer a 10-year levy period, and any homeowner—so this is available to any homeowner. There are no requirements for this option. So the NPRB has received four requests for deferred assessments and has received seven requests for the 10-year assessment period. You heard from the public during the public hearing, the actual contracted tree removal cost, administrative charge, and removal interest will be placed as a special assessment on the property owner's property taxes. Costs are spread over an installment method, either over the five or 10-year options, with the 3% interest factor added to each option. The interest factor is dependent on the assessment bonds, which are levied in order to pay for the—for the contracted private property work. So it's currently 3%. We have been notified by the city of Minneapolis that the bonding—is—interest rates are going up. So in 2023, we're expecting to have to increase our interest rate to about 4.6% next year. So for this year's, the installments are paid with a 3% entrance-interest factor. That's a locked interest. It's not variable. It doesn't change. The first installment for the special assessment will appear on the 2023 taxes. So I wanted to provide some additional information. When we did the resolution for the public hearing, we talked a lot about the impact to certain parts of our city, but I wanted to kind of just show you some historical information. So this first chart at the top are the private property tree removal costs from 2000 through 2022. So you will see the uptick in tree removal costs in 2005. That was for the Dutch elm disease that infected most of the city. And then it comes back down, and you can see that it really stayed at kind of a low level until 2021, where you now start seeing an uptick again, and this is due to the Emerald Ash Bore infestation. I talked to Director Severt before presenting this evening, and he's thinking that it's going to take probably another three to five years to remove all of the Emerald Ash Bore —or the ash trees that are infected in the city. The chart below is the median assessment amount by year. So as inflation hits everywhere, the cost of removing trees rises. So you can see that there has been a continual rise from 2010 up to 2022 of the median cost of removing a tree. So they definitely are getting more expensive to remove. The impact of assessments based on areas of our city—we talked about this before. We definitely see that in ACP areas of our city, property owners are relying on levying the assessment. They're not able to pay the tree in full, and so they are needing to have it levied and pay it off over the five-year period. So that's why having the 10-year option was also important as the costs increased, to be able to spread that over 10 years rather than five years can sometime be a benefit to the property owner. And again, this is a reminder—you saw this map previously showing outside of the ACP areas and inside ACP areas, the number of trees removed, and you can see the concentration of trees this year in those two ZIP codes, 55411 and 55412. And again, the way Emerald Ash Bore has entered our city and moved through our city. It entered in the southeast and has moved northwest. And so that's how—that infestation has spread. This is a complete count of the 940 trees that were removed during this period, broken out by ZIP code of the 940 trees. You now have the pending assessment rolls for both the 10-year and the 5-year in front of you. There are 794 trees on this pending assessment list. We do continue to take payments through the end of November, so the number of properties that we will levy ultimately levy will be a little bit lower than the 794, but that's approximately where we are at right now. And Director Severt and myself are here to answer any questions you may have.
Got a few lights here. Okay, Commissioner Musich.
Thank you, President Forni. How are—how are people that are being assessed for a tree removal being notified of the options they have for financing that removal if they're unable to pay the full cost?
President Forni and Commissioner Musich, so when the tree gets marked, there's information about the potential cost of the tree and that it can be assessed and levied. They are provided the forestry contact information and the forestry number at that time. And if there's calls regarding the process of the tree removal and with the contractor, it stays in the forestry department. If they have questions about how it gets levied, how they can finance it, if they qualify for the deferral program, they forward those calls to the Finance Department, and the Finance Department handles those calls. And again, the financial hardship options are included in each of the billing letter mailings that come from the Finance Department.
Okay, so they're not—we don't leave it on someone's door or hand it to someone. We're mailing it to the homeowner on record for that property?
Yes, that is correct.
And they're receiving at least one notification? Or are they receiving multiple notifications from the Park Board?
President Forni and Commissioner Musich, they receive several notifications throughout the entire process.
Okay. Thank—you for that additional information. So when I first joined the Park Board in 2014, many, many homes in my district were having letters come to them, letting them know that their trees were going to have to come down. And it was extremely difficult for many folks to pay for that. I'm thankful for my colleagues that helped write the resolution to extend the period of time that people are able to finance that over. I think it's tremendously helpful for people to have a longer financing option for them. What I'm frustrated about is the city's lack of action around allocating more funding to help homeowners with the impacts of this pest in our—in our—in our community. The Minneapolis Street Advisory Commission encouraged the city of Minneapolis to put in place programs to help homeowners. They encouraged them to give more money to the neighborhood associations for that purpose. They also encouraged them to help people plant new trees, because oftentimes, these trees that we're losing are huge sheltering—trees that lower our energy bills. And so it's a double whammy, really, for folks. You're not only having to pay to remove the tree, but you're also losing that benefit of shade for your home. And the city did not—has not taken action on that, and it's very unfortunate. So next time you have a conversation with your city council member, let them know that this is hitting folks that can't afford it hardest, and that they really should be reconsidering how they fund assistance. Thanks.
Commissioner Mends.
Thank you, President Forni. I do have a couple of questions regarding this, and I think that it is extremely unfortunate that there is almost a triple or quadruple whammy happening in these ZIP codes right now, because property taxes are going up in those neighborhoods. We're seeing—we're having them remove these trees. So it's—and we heard the emotion today. This work is not done by us. Can I—can I get a little clarification on who does this work, and do we ever do this work? Or it's always contracted out? And then maybe some explanation as to why or why the claims of two or three times more cost for—the contractor that we're using?
Sure. President Forni, Commissioner Mends, the work is all done by contracted companies. Our—our crews do not perform the work, because it's all on private property. And when trees are condemned and the bids are—well, bids are actually collected to get the prices for the trees, even before the trees are marked. So the companies that are going to be removing a tree are basically—they're basing it on the size of the tree. So if a tree is going to be $1,000, and that's the maximum cost, that's what the property owner is informed of. So because we never know if it might be the maximum cost, what we do, though, is we encourage folks to communicate with our customer service staff, because there's oftentimes where somebody might say, "I'm going to treat the tree." That's okay. Then we just kind of put it on hold, and you can treat the tree. We don't even necessarily confirm that they've really treated it. We're just kind of giving the benefit of the doubt. But I think the part that maybe is important to know is, because ash trees are going to die from Emerald Ash Bore, in a way, we're kind of doing folks a favor, because the deader the tree gets, the more expensive it's going to be to remove. So the—so the sort of misunderstanding about the cost being so much more from us versus a private company, that can happen. But for the most part, our costs from the contractors we use are very competitive with what the private companies will charge. And a lot of times, private companies might do things a little differently, like, because they're getting paid right away, they might have a lower cost. Or because they might be doing it in the winter, when their—when their business is lower, they may charge a lower cost. Whereas, we're kind of removing these trees all year long, so you never know—it's all based on what that bid is that's received in January of each year as to what the cost will be.
Okay. And then, we don't do this work because it's on private property, but we contract it out. And then, how many different contractors do we use to perform the work?
Right now, there's three, I think, companies that do the regular bids. Then, trees that are called a special bid, which means that there's some obstacle, like a deck, or lots of wires, or it's hard to get to. Those trees are bid separately, and there's probably about eight or 10 companies that will bid on those, some of which include those regular bid companies. But for the most part, the regular bid trees, it's really just three or four companies.
And then you said that homeowners can treat the tree. Is that the biological option that Erica was discussing? Or can you—can you expand on the public comment around the biological option that was explained?
What she was suggesting was something almost like organically-biologically safe. The treatment is actually a pesticide that kills the larva inside the tree. I don't know of any biologically-safe option for treating ash trees.
And then the statute says that we are—we're allowed—we're given the authority to do this?
Correct.
Where are we required to do this?
It's based on the severity of what the pest is. So if the impact of the pest is going to be so severe that it's going to be sort of a hardship overall for the entire community, it kind of falls into that category. Another pest that hasn't been here yet is Asian Longhorn beetle. That would also fall into something like that. Things like Japanese beetles, or just pests that are not making a major impact, wouldn't hit the same kind of criteria that Asian Long—or that Emerald Ash Bore has.
Okay, thank you. No more questions.
Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, President Forni. I'm curious, a couple of sort of procedural questions, and then more of a communication one. If—if we found a problematic tree on like a city-owned lot, who would get assessed that? Or a city-owned property?
President Forni, Commissioner Thompson, trees that are on city property, other than, say, vacant lots, they still fall under us as being the caretaker of municipal property.
So—but like, what about an abandoned, like, foreclosed property that has fallen into, like, CPEDs jurisdiction?
In that case, we actually notify that city agency about it.
Okay. So when nobody gets charged?
The city agency does.
City agency gets charged, okay. And then, I—I'm curious, in our communication, I—is there any way to make the 10-year option sort of what we lead with in terms of communicating with homeowners? Rather than—I mean, I just know from experience and from my—I mean, I did the— Rather than, I mean, I just know from experience and from my, I mean, I did the math real fast. Half of the total trees coming down is 470, and the amount coming out of my district is 475. So, we have more than half. When you read that sticker shock of you're forced to pay this, I know for a lot of people, and we heard from them, it's incredibly, like, that's all you read, right? You see that, and you just go into your own version of spiraling. Could we lead with, this has to happen, and you have a 10-year payment plan? If you choose to pay it off in one bulk, or if you choose to, that we lead with that, it might help us in how we're communicating to people.
President Forney and Commissioners, the tree assessment bonds are sold over a five-year period. When we considered having the option of the 10-year levy option, we didn't change the bond sale. So, we would need to consider and talk through the bond sale. We could sell tree bonds over a 10-year period, and then every tree assessment would be over a 10-year period rather than a five-year period. So, I think we can, I mean, both Director Severt and myself have talked a lot about how can we get this information out quicker, sooner, easier to understand. So, we are, you know, planning on working on that so that we can have a better communication plan overall, totally, starting next season.
Thank you. I have another question about how we communicate with the community. I don't doubt the story, although I don't want, of someone just wandering through a backyard, looking at trees. Do we notify residents, "Hey, NPRB is going to be on this block these days"? You know, I mean, like, my street sweeping went in this morning for me, so everyone's scampering to move their cars, right? Do we do something like that to say, "Hey, on the week of this, we might be in and out of yards to take a look at your trees"? Or do we just kind of show up?
President Forney, Commissioner Thompson, we don't notify in advance. The ordinance essentially gives us the authority to go onto private property to look at trees. We do try to communicate with the property owner when we're doing that, because if the tree's condemned, we're actually painting the tree and don't want people to be surprised. But we have a door hanger that kind of explains what we're doing in that regard. But logistically, because there's so many trees, and there's 12 inspectors for the whole city, we just haven't been able to come up with that kind of a strategy to be that proactive and advance notice like that.
Do we know where we'll be, when we'll be there? Just the day of? Or do we have some sort of advanced schedule?
Each tree inspector pretty much has a route that they'll follow. So, they know that they're kind of returning to a certain part of the city at a certain time, unless there's things that pull them off of that. There could be storm damage, tree planting is an example. But each one kind of keeps the track of where they're going to be at certain times, so they can kind of go back and recheck trees that look a little iffy, and they're not positive if it's infested or not.
Are we communicating what our litmus is for the Emerald Ash Bore? Like, what we're looking for? So, I know curious homeowners might see the flag, they noticed the green paint, and they want to go inspect it for themselves. Is there any sort of like educational opportunity there for what it is that our experts are seeing?
Well, our folks, they aren't condemning a tree unless they really see the signs that it has it. And that's primarily where woodpeckers have been pecking on the bark, and just to get to the larva that's underneath the bark, and real thin crowns, that sort of thing. Dutch elm disease is a little different, where you can actually show staining of the fungus under the bark. But because Emerald Ash Bore is an actual insect, there's all sorts of things. There's little D-shaped exit holes, and, but that woodpecker part is the main thing. So, usually when people ask, "Well, come and show me what it is that you found," they're able to do that very easily, because they are able to point things out. And they have handouts of literature that we can provide to folks that can show, you know, why Emerald Ash Bore is important to keep under control. Because essentially, right now, what we're doing, there's a thing called the exponential death curve when it comes to Emerald Ash Bore, where they just, the population keeps going up and up and up, and trees just keep dying faster and faster. So, we've, while we've taken care of all the public trees and replaced those, it's the private trees that are now seeing that population of the beetle go up like it is.
Yeah. I'm not sure I have any other questions at the moment, so I thank you both for that. Thank you.
Commissioner Bennie.
Thank you, President Forney. So, just to share with my colleagues, I actually got tagged in January or something, right around the time that we were being sworn in. And I guess I have a couple of observations from that. I think that I got two bids on the submittal, and I think because there's more being bid, the second bid was actually kind of shockingly high, the other bid was lower. Ended up going with my own contractor, because I thought I'd take an opportunity to do some more pruning and things like that in my yard. And it was a pretty scrawny tree. The other issue, though, I think, that's really, I think beyond the park board's control, is that I don't have an alley, so there's an easement back there for power lines. And that created, as one of the public speakers said today, the block had to go down. And although I really appreciated that Excel did not charge me to take the electricity down, there was zero communication. Even my arborist didn't have any heads up. So, I think this is just really, I think there's a large demand right now, you know, sort of supply-demand. I think that drives the costs up. And I think that the, you know, just the process of these removals, they can go from very, very simple, nothing removals, to incredibly complicated removals. So, and I just will say this, and this is going to be sounding flippant, which I guess I intend, but in terms of the things I've been subjected to from our city government, this wasn't one of the worst things. So, there have been other, much worse things. So, thank you.
Commissioner Olson.
So, I'm curious, so what happens if someone ultimately can't or refuses to pay? Would it go to a collection agency at some point? And does that happen? What is that process like?
President Forney and Commissioner Olson, the assessment process is what happens. So, if they refuse to pay, we've removed, we've removed the tree, we've paid the contractor. They refuse to pay, or they have the inability to pay, it becomes a special assessment onto their property taxes. And like some of the speakers spoke to, and how we addressed this board when we asked for the change to the financial hardship policies, we don't want our trees to be the reason someone loses our house. But that's the fact of what happens sometimes. So...
Thank you for that.
Vice President Smith.
All right. So, I'm listening, and I'm listening to the public, and unfortunately, I know a lot of this, and I hear it in real time. And so, there are a couple of things. I'm going to make some suggestions, strong suggestions. We changed the notification process at how we deliver this information, especially in communities that are financially challenged. One, because you can send a piece of mail, and they could never literally get it, not due to anything that they have done, but when they say, "I've not received something", "I've not received something." I've mailed information from my office to people in community personally, and they've never received it. And it's just sort of floating in the universe. And so, there are just errors made with our postal service, or maybe it's a mix-up with the neighbor who intends to give information. So, that's one thing. Two, when we're going out to assess the trees, it literally takes maybe a minute to say, "Hey, we're assessing your trees. This may result in a fee," so that the homeowner is instantly aware. If you're wandering around in someone's backyard, Lord knows, in this climate, hell, I would want someone to know, excuse me, that I'm assessing a tree versus someone who may be doing a home invasion and not be murdered. Just being honest. Like, I had someone in my yard steal my motorcycle in broad daylight, on camera, at 9:00 AM on a Sunday morning. Ludicrous. Had I seen this gentleman, different outcome. It's just a bike, not as important. But someone who maybe is in fear, we're talking about a time where a community is on edge, and financially, we are just, lots of folks are suffering, lots of poor, working-class people. And we're in these areas of, areas of concentrated poverty. We have to be super intentional about what we're doing when it has an impact on the quality of a person's life and livability, and potentially them losing their home. So, we have to eat that. We have to figure out a system where we, as the people who are employed, park, staff, figure out a better way to communicate, because they're not making this up. Some of this is true, some of it is just the kind of caveats of life. And so, I would suggest that we change how we notify people. And also, let's be intentional about sharing. "Hey, there's a possibility that there may be an alternative that you can think of to save the tree. I'm not aware of it. Technology's changing, science is changing, or people are becoming smarter." So, are we, when people, is it just the people who know this? Or is it regular old folks, like some of these folks who came today that thought they had ideas on how to save these trees? How do we do that? That's, that would be my thing. And then, the three and four regular contractors, do we have some sort of honor system that we're asking them, as we are gainfully giving them contracts for removing trees, to say like, "Hey, Billy, don't jack up your price when you go over north versus when you're over south in my neighborhood"? Are we just checking in and doing a kind of a community check when these folks call us, like, "Oh, well, it was Billy Tree's removal. He charged me, he wanted to bid $5,000, and Meg's was two"? There's some sort of efficacy that we should consider. I think that we have to go beyond what we have been doing, because it hasn't been working, to think creatively and get back to the human side of this, to help people stay in our neighborhoods. One, and we're, most of these trees are in North Minneapolis, where people suffer significant health consequences as a reality of what is happening with the climate. So, those would be my two cents. And then, we're authorized...
Can I suggest that you do it in the second round?
Oh, go for it.
You've passed your time. Sorry about that. Commissioner Menz for a second time.
Oh, I don't get my same time. Oh, bummer. I thought I was going to add on to there. I thought I had a minute and 32. So, when, for that chart that we had with, where it was $1,000 a year assessed, was that based on the five-year, like payout? Or was it based on the 10-year payout?
President Forney, Commissioner Menz, I'm not quite sure. Is that one of...
...the bar graph? So, if we, sorry. So, if we look at those ending bar graphs, it says it's $1,000. If I'm reading that right, it's about $1,000 a year?
So, this top chart is actually the total cost of removing all of the trees that year.
Okay.
So, in 2022, that's over $1.5 million that we...
Oh, I'm sorry, the bottom part, the bottom one.
Oh, yeah. So, the median assessment is $1,000.
Median assessment amount per year?
Right, per tree. I'm sorry.
Oh, per tree.
So, it's a median of assessment amount by year. So, it's the median, per tree.
Per, oh, per tree?
Yes.
But people might have two trees or three trees, because it, it looks like there's a lot that have more trees. And I'm also wondering, to speak to what Vice President Smith said, how do we create cost controls, especially if we're going to be going out to a 10-year sort of pay, you know, it's a credit card, I guess, that we're creating? How do we prevent them from gouging people and making it a higher cost? I like the 10-year option. I'd like a 15-year option. I'd like a 20-year option. I think that that would even be great. So, how do we minimize the impact to the homeowner doing the responsible thing?
President Forney, Commissioner Menz, the companies that do the bidding, it's all done through the city procurement process. So, everyone knows the various rules that they have to follow in order to do the bidding. But, and so, one company is typically more than another, because that's just kind of the way it works. But then, the assignment of the trees is pretty much based on the number of trees we have to remove, and what companies are available to do the removal. So, even though you might be the higher, highest bid, you still might get some trees, just because we have to get trees into the system for removal. So, the lowest bid company doesn't get all the trees, just because they wouldn't be able to keep up with the number of trees that need to come down.
How do we determine which homeowner pays the higher fee versus the lower fee? Like, how is that determined? And how is that? I mean, that's, my time's up.
Shut up.
Did you have a response to that?
Well, that's, I mean, it's pretty much done with our office staff and in communication with folks, and being able to allocate where the resources go in terms of what company can do what. Because you might have one company in one part of the city, another company in another part of the city. So, it just depends on where they're at.
Commissioner Thompson for a second time.
Thank you, President Forney. I know, I have three questions, so I'll ask them quickly and hopefully not take over a minute. We have the median cost, but do we have the mean? Yeah.
President Forney, Commissioner Thompson, I could get it for you. I don't know it off the top of my head.
Yeah, I would appreciate that, because, just again, quick calculations, if this was the average, it'd be far less than $1 million, but we're almost pushing two. So, I'm guessing that the mean is significantly higher. Can our forestry department handle some of these? And how much would that cost us if we did? Do we have any idea?
President Forney, Commissioner Thompson, I'm assuming you're saying our crew is on private property?
Yes. Is that a possibility?
It's not, only because statute-wise, we're just not allowed to be on private property.
Liberty?
And that was actually thought of back in 2004, when so many elm trees were condemned. But it just wasn't a possibility. It just doesn't, it's really not allowed in terms of the authority we have.
Which authority mandates that?
Like, well, the city charter and the ordinances.
Is it the state or the city? Okay, the city. Okay, I have 26 seconds. Is there any way, we're talking about budget right now, are there any potential solutions that could maybe come up through our budgetary process, where we sort of keep a fund, where maybe it's, I don't know, Commissioner Albert's, like, parking kind of thing, where then we, that's how we feed? I mean, I'm just, I'm spitballing here, but I'm curious if there's some type of idea that might come around, that we could have our own fund if the city's not going to help us?
President Forney and Commissioner Thompson, I will defer to Council Rice, because by state statute, the private property owner is the person responsible to pay for these tree removals.
If you could repeat your question, what Ms. Weisman said, Director Weisman said is correct. And I remember looking at this issue back in 2004, and we've had conversations over the years about how to handle this. My recollection is the park board is charged with the authority of doing the tree inspections, because these are a threat to public health. Disease trees are bad, and someone needs to address them. You can't have a situation where they just proliferate and continue to spread disease and cause problems. So, the park board, as I recall, there's a state law on this, and there's an ordinance, isn't there?
Yes.
And the board is charged with doing what you have to do, removing the diseased tree. And it's not fun, but somebody has to do it, and you're it. And the mechanism you have to do that is this removal process, and failing that, you basically have to order the tree removed, and then the individual property owner owns the property, has to pay to get it removed.
I know I'm out of time, but can I just sync the...
But I'm answering your question, so I can...
Yeah, this is a follow-up. May I, President Forney? So, to be clear, yeah, we assess the tree, it gets bid out, that bid gets paid by the city. The city then goes to the county and says, "Hey, they now owe us," and the county assesses the homeowner. Is that the loop?
Actually, the park board is doing the assessment. That's what this vote is tonight.
Okay.
You're voting to do it, potentially. You've designated the trees as being needed to remove, you've approved this list, the owners may or may not get the list... The own owner, the owners may or may not get the list, you know, make the arrangements or take care of it themselves. But if they don't, you're taking an action that will lead to an assessment if it's necessary for the Park Board to undertake the work to get it done.
So so that's my question. If our forestry department is not doing it, if an external forces, but they're getting, who who's paying them to then have the homeowner being assessed?
President Forni, Commissioner Thompson, the Park Board pays the contractor.
Okay.
And then we invoice the property owner.
Got it.
For the cost of the removal of the tree.
Perfect. That's what I thought, but I wasn't quite sure how it worked out. Thank you. Thank you for the extra time, President Forni.
Commissioner Schaefer.
A couple of questions and one idea. How often do you find out that someone is losing their home due to a tree assessment? And how do you find that out? And is that uncommon, common?
President Forni and Commissioner Schaefer, we are not notified if a person's property goes into tax foreclosure. Tax foreclosure means you haven't paid your property taxes nor your assessments that have been levied against your property. So it's not just the tree.
Yep.
That would cause a property owner to lose their home. It's being in a tax forfeiture position.
Okay, thank you. And then my idea is I have heard from my neighbors, I've heard from others, that they love planting trees. We all love planting trees. And I would like to encourage us to think about, and the two ZIP codes that are primarily affected for this upcoming year is if we could rally the Tree Advisory Council and possibly the private sector of people that maybe would be willing to donate trees. I think this could be a real area of our volunteer stewardship area where for those people that have a heart for this kind of thing, it could build relationships between various communities, various neighborhoods, and give more active activity to the Tree Advisory Council. But that's just an idea I'm throwing out there that I think if it was 400 trees, 450 trees that were affected in those particular ZIP codes, I think that's a doable solution. And I think it's something that could make a commitment to our climate, preserving our natural environment. Is it on our land? No. But is it being a steward and kind of stepping up and saying, hey, we're going to creatively use our networks to promote this? I would support that and be willing to talk to somebody else about that.
Vice President Smith for a second time.
I think when we talked about, sorry, thanks, thanks, twin. When we talked about being authorized and not required, could we delay some of the tree removals in order to help the homeowner find financial resources in cases where someone maybe has reached out to us to say, hey, I can't afford the $5,000 to remove these seven trees out of my yard? Could, is there a way for the assessor, the arborist, to figure out how much time they may potentially have before it causes long-lasting damage to maybe give the homeowner some alternative time?
President Forni, Commissioner Smith, we do work with homeowners in in that respect in that if they communicate, like, we call it extending the deadline. And we are often asked if a deadline can be extended. And it's sometimes it might be because the homeowner is working with a company and trying to work out when they can do it and and it doesn't fit in or there's, we mentioned like electrical line drops, that sort of thing. So, so, yeah, we do, we do postpone things if we need to. We don't necess, in some cases, it can even be two years because with Emerald Ashboro, it's a little different. But there's just so many trees that we don't, aren't necessarily going back and communicating like, hey, it's, you should be paying more attention, you know, it's been a year now, your tree's probably getting worse. And ultimately, it, this hasn't happened yet, but ultimately, if a tree is totally dead, it actually falls into housing inspections as enforcing a removal of a hazard tree. But we don't want them to get to that point because then it's just a real mess to get it down and it's really expensive.
Yeah, thank you. No, I appreciate that. And so that was just something that I want to make sure that we try to maybe make clear to folks so that they have a little bit of time maybe to find some alternatives or find different companies, maybe even out of the city. And then for the levy over the 10, you know, the 10-year plan, like just being intentional in those areas of high concentrated poverty, how are we explaining it? And really kind of, unfortunately, this may feel heavy to folks, but we got to hold some hands through that process. That's how information and care is given.
Okay, Commissioner Elber.
Thank you, President Forni. Is there anything prohibiting us from providing financial assistance to homeowners, you know, I'm thinking direct here? Anything, any prohibition?
President Forni and Commissioner Elber, I guess I would need to defer to Council Rice on that as well. I mean, I know through financial audits and the Office of the State Auditor, any expenditure of a government has to have a public purpose. And I don't know, as the Minneapolis Park Board, if our authority would allow us to provide financial support to a private property owner.
Okay, so the reason I'm asking is because we have, we have this scholarship fund, which staff set up for programs to help pay for for fees associated with programming. And I guess I'm wondering, is there anything preventing us from setting up something similar? But in this case, to help homeowners with financial assistance to help defray their cost of, I think, the cost to them of removing diseased trees?
So President Forni and Commissioner Elber, again, the scholarship fund serves the public purpose of providing youth programs in our parks. The diseased and infested tree removals off of private property is not a public purpose.
Wait, Council Rice, please.
Madam President, I agree with what Director Weisman has said. That's under current law. I'd have to do some research on that question. But essentially, you would have to find a public purpose in making that expenditure of public funds. So, I mean, you'd have to pass an ordinance, you'd have to establish a policy, you'd have to set forth something. I'd have to look at the the laws on that and see if you could ground it in something. Or failing that, one way of doing it is going to the legislature and asking the legislature to authorize you to or permit you to spend public funds for this purpose.
Well, and and just to, okay, so to be clear, I heard people talk about public health with these trees. So that, to me, that sounds like a public purpose. We were talking about public, I mean, other people said it, it wasn't, wasn't me. And also, I thought the scholarship fund was people donate to the Park Board. So, I mean, I'm wondering if something similar could be done. Is there anything preventing us from creating a tree fund to assist homeowners with with this?
We could research that question. I I think the board would then have to find the sources for it and raise the taxes and I can, you know.
Well, and I guess, I guess that leads me to wonder, you know, and and this is separate from this resolution, so I'll, I'll just ask it, but don't expect you to answer or anybody. But, you know, I'm wondering how that is going, the scholarship fund, the, in terms of people donating. I'm curious. For another moment in time. Thank you.
Commissioner Bennie.
Just super quickly, this is the other thing that comes to mind where there's a deficiency that is flagged or tagged in some way are sidewalks and the property owner is responsible for the main, the replacement or the, you know, some reconstruction of the sidewalk. And that's the same, similar type of burden. And then there's also assessments for street and utility work, but I think that's really different. So anyway, I I just want to say that just so people know, it's not just the Park Board being mean about trees. It's, it's kind of just the practice and it must be statutory. Thanks.
Commissioner Musage.
Thank you, President Forni. I just wanted to share, this is my second time, I'll be brief. I just wanted to share with my colleagues, helping people plant trees on private property is something that the Climate Resiliency Initiative that Commissioner Forni and I are serving on is working on. We're not, we haven't looked at helping people cut trees down because that's just, that's not, that's not something that that group wants to see happening. So instead, we're focused on how do we help connect people to trees and help understand the value of trees and understand how to pay for planting those trees? And and that is a conversation we're having is where are there outside funds available to assist with making more trees available to people? Removing the diseased trees, we haven't looked at primarily because, as I mentioned, the focus is on planting trees, but it is something I can bring up in that context as well. Thanks.
Commissioner Schaefer.
One more comment. Maybe President Forni and Commissioner Musage would like to add an amendment to this resolution that would say something along the lines of if, if they could target these two ZIP codes, I'm not sure if they could, that your Climate Resiliency Initiative would be willing to support replanting the trees that are lost. Just throwing that, it might need to be flushed out a little more, but I think it it would be really something that they could attach in new letters that are going out in 2023. Or 20, yeah, whatever year. But go ahead. If you'd like to.
I can speak to that. I don't think that it's appropriate for us to speak on behalf of the coalition. We're just members of a group of loosely affiliated people that are trying to do what we can to increase the climate resiliency of Minneapolis, St. Paul, and the entire metropolitan region. So so I'm happy to bring back this issue to them, but I I don't believe that we can speak on their behalf nor take any action that would reflect actions that they will take in the future.
So I'll quickly just jump in and say that I know that the Climate Resiliency Initiative that Commissioner Musage and I are working on is about areas of concentrated poverty. So we already are, you know, very tuned to this reality. So we keep on talking about homeowners. Do we have a percentage of how many people? I know that this area is heavily, heavily non-owned occupied, that these are owned by landlords. And do we have any sense of this list of how many might be non-homeown landlords, I'm just going to say?
President Forni and Commissioners, I don't have that. We would need to take that set of data and get the Hennepin County property tax information to to delineate that. We did, and I don't have it with me today, but when we did do the presentation around the financial hardship policy, we did take a snapshot of 2019 and just looked at homestead properties so that we could understand the differences of the impact between homesteaded properties and non-homestead and commercial properties. And homestead properties are, a higher percentage are the ones utilizing the levying process and spreading it over the five and 10, 10-year period. So it's, it's more, a higher percentage of homestead properties are utilizing that.
That's wonderful. That's wonderful to hear. And and just, you know, along the lines that Commissioner Schaefer brought up and everything, the taking down is horrific. The the assessing, you know, homeowners is is certainly horrific. But to me, you know, the replanting is so, so critical for us to do. And so anyway, we can increase education on that. To me, it is so important and how we can be of, of a resource for replanting is something that we we need to continue to work on. So with that, was that a resolution? It's been so long. Okay, I think that we, it's been behalf, so, I mean, not past, excuse me, it's been moved and seconded. So all those in favor of 2022, 313, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Wait a second, maybe we should do a roll call. I think I heard three, but I'm not sure.
Commissioner Thompson.
Nay.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson.
Aye.
Commissioner Musage.
Aye.
Commissioner Mens.
Nay.
Commissioner Elber.
Aye.
Commissioner Bennie.
Aye.
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
President Forni.
Aye.
You have six ayes, three nays.
And that motion carries. So we are on to Resolution 2022, 314. If somebody would like to move that for me, please.
I will move Resolution, oh, why is this on over my screen?
2022.
What, 2022, 243?
314.
340, 314. A resolution authorizing the President to negotiate a new contract with Superintendent Al Bangora. Very excited about this one. Can someone second that? Second?
Didn't like that hesitation, gang, eh? Okay, any discussion on this resolution? Commissioner Musage.
I am just thrilled that Superintendent Bangora is enjoying this job so much and has so much love for the park system in the city of Minneapolis that he's interested in continuing to serve the public in this way. It's been a tough first term and I'm just, I'm very excited that 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 you want to continue on this journey with us. So thank you for that.
Any other comments? Ditto. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion carries and we are on then to a presentation of Data Insights Team Operations and Procedures. Director Harbison, take it away.
Thank you, President Forni and Commissioners. I know you have a lot on your plate tonight, so this will be a pretty brief presentation. And then, and then if you ask tons and tons of questions, then it's on you. So I'm going to speak briefly about the Data Insights Team. Across the this first year of your term, you've been probably hearing on and off about the work of the Data Insights Team, often in collaboration with other presentations that are coming before you. In fact, some of the analysis work around the tree abadements was done by Data Insights Team members. So it kind of pops up everywhere. And what I want to do today is take a brief moment to just sort of formally say to you and to the public and talk about who we are as the Data Insights Team, what we do and how we work. And hopefully, that's pretty simple and gives you a window into this little group within our organization. So the Data Insights Team was actually included in the 2021 budget initially, and it was a departmental reorganization at that time. We officially launched it on March 1st of 2021. So as part of that reorganization, two and a half staff, I'll talk about that in a moment, the half, two and a half staff were moved into the Strategic Planning Department and one existing member of Strategic Planning was dedicated to that team. And then as part of that reorganization, we also wrote new job descriptions and created new titles for that staff. So the staff that exists in the Data Insights Team today are Madeline Hudek, who was in planning and stayed in planning, Peter Hama and Lyndon Weiss-Wurda, who both came from asset management to planning. And the three of them do have that new title, Data Insights Analyst, which describes their workload perfectly. Joe Ayers, who is our GIS and database administrator, and he actually works half-time in the Strategic Planning Department and half-time in IT. So that's the half position that we share. And then as Director of Strategic Planning, I do lead the Data Insights Team. 2021 was a bit of a startup year for us. We were, we were working through some staff transitions. Because staff were moving between departments, many of them still had workload in their existing departments. So it took us a little while to get ramped up. We were thinking about how the team would be organized and also taking on some very early projects. In 2022, we actually wrote a budget goal. And so my presentation tonight is sort of the end of that budget goal, which it seems with the change in nomenclature and procedure, may be the last budget goal that I ever conclude, which that's okay with me. And that budget goal was to develop and communicate out processes and procedures for data insights across the organization. So that is a large piece of what I'm doing with you tonight. So now I want to talk about what we do, our purpose or charter, if you will. And we've boiled this down to a fairly complicated sentence, which is that the Data Insights Team is focused on building MPRB's overall capacity to inform decisions through reliable, insightful, and insightful, and replicable data, tools, visualizations, and analysis. So let me take that apart a little bit, because what we're trying to get to here is that we have in this organization, and most organizations are, are not exceptions, is that we have a lot of information. But how do we transition that information into actually being able to make decisions around the information that we have? So we kind of say that we're looking at trying to evolve information to insight. And I suppose I could trademark that, but I won't. So I want to, I want to point out a couple of words that are in this statement that tells us, tells us a little bit more about what we do. So first of all, I want to talk about this word "overall." So we talk about our overall capacity. So the Data Insights Team is based in strategic planning, but we serve all departments and divisions, right? So we see ourselves almost as a bit of a little consulting firm, kind of embedded within strategic planning, and we go out and help whoever needs that assistance. Because of that, we are able to look constantly for interconnections between staff work. We had an example recently where we had similar requests from two different departments to two different Data Insights Team members. And because they were talking to each other on a regular basis, we were able to desilo, desilo that data and actually make one project that spans several departments. So again, we're working broadly and we can have eyes on what's going on across the organization from a data standpoint. I also want to talk about this "inform decisions" word. So in order to inform decisions, we want to lay a very strong data foundation, right? Our decision-making is only going to be good as the data. So we need to lay that foundation, which is a big part of our work right now. We also are trying to assist with interpretation of that data. So we work with departments across the organization to understand what is the data saying that we are collecting. At the last board meeting, there was a presentation about the Free Recreation Centers program. And one of the things that we had looked at when that data first started come out, come out, and we brainstormed, was that idea of participants per program. So that key bit of data analysis, which was discussed heavily by this board, is actually something that came out of that workshopping within the Data Insights Team, is how do we interpret all these numbers and actually have maybe a meaningful metric around which decisions can be made. And one thing I want to be really key on is that we have a lot of important public information tools here in the organization. The Data Insights Team is not about creating public information tools that simply tell the public, for instance, what facilities are in the parks. What we want to do is how do we turn those public information tools into data that measures something? And one good example of that is recently, or last winter, the ice rink mapping. And this summer, the pool mapping is no longer a static map. It looks that way to the public. You can get on and see which pools and rinks are open right now, but behind all that, we are collecting data on a day-by-day, sometimes hour-by-hour basis that we can look back on at the end of a season, right? So we've turned that public, base public information into a data collection tool. But the other thing we're not going to do is actually make the decisions. So we're trying to arm the organization, be it you or the superintendent or the department and division directors, with that data so that they can move forward in a way that is informed. The Data Insights Team is never going to be the one that says, here's what you must do. So these adjectives and nouns here, I also want to unpack because these can be thought about as processes, the reliable, insightful, and replicable. And some of these can be thought about as products. So when we think about how do we go about our work, we want reliable data, which means we want to create consistency across the MPRB and knowing who's responsible, and also creating regular updates. So if data isn't regularly updated by people who are designated to do so, we will lose the reliability of that data. So that's a big piece that we're working on through some data governance work. Data should be insightful. We want to collect as much data as we possibly can. So if we're collecting data anyways, we're going to be asking, is there one more thing, two more things, three, that we can easily collect? So if we're out doing wood duck surveys and helping understand how do we collect data on wood ducks, do we want to add one more parameter? Is the nest over water or over land? And if we do that, it gives us more flexibility in the future to be insightful. And then replicable, we want to ensure that data is easy to use. I mentioned the wood duck thing. We're rolling out our second year of collection. An app has been created so that staff can easily enter standardized data without variation in the field. So there, it becomes replicable year over year because it's easy to use and people will want to use it. It gets embedded in everyday practices and we can create consistency over time. Some project examples of this, we are rolling out demographic data collection standards across our organization, which do not exist right now. We're collecting demographic data in a lot of different ways, so it's hard to look across departments and find out what's really happening. We're creating data governance forms, which are going to say who owns which piece of data and who's allowed to alter it, because sometimes data gets corrupted. A park's base layer, one standard park's base layer for everyone, the equity metrics that we do each year, and the regional park visitor counts are also about embedding base data into our work. So when it comes to the products, these can take a lot of different forms. And our team has gotten actually really good and fallen a lot in love with Power BI. And you have seen Power BI dashboards on many of the presentations that you've been looking at over the years. We still use base spreadsheets. We look at ArcGIS mapping, Microsoft Forms, Story Maps, a whole bunch of different kinds of things. So what we're trying to produce is the right tool, the right piece of equipment for the right project. So here you can see again an Arcap mapping, you can see wood duck nesting charts, you can see a recreation dashboard, a variety of different things that our team has access to technologically that we can apply to this work. So staffing and relationships, I've just got a couple of slides left. So the Data Insights Team sort of sits in this little hub within essentially the five divisions of the organization. So each department and division has an assigned team member. So we've divvied everybody out. And that team member actually embeds with the departments that they serve. So in recreation, Lyndon Weiss-Werda attends regular recreation leadership meetings. And the reason for this is twofold. Number one, they can respond directly to data requests in real time, creates relationships across these departments so that people are comfortable asking about data. And also, that Data Insights Team member can be on the lookout for data opportunities that may not be immediately apparent. By sitting in that meeting and listening to the problems that people are experiencing, there might be a data solution that would never have shown up as a data solution without that constant embedding that we do. And then the Data Insights Team actually meets regularly to workshop ideas. I meet with them as a group every other week. And then the, the team also meets three or four times every two weeks in little half-hour sessions to bring things together, pick each other's brains, and figure out the best way forward. That also reveals a full picture of data that's happening across the organization. They can compare notes based on their embeddedness with other departments. That collaboration is critical, both within our group and then also as we reach out into the other departments. And just so you're aware, the way that we have it staffed is that Madeline sits in the planning and serves the planning department, division, sorry. Peter Hama serves Environmental Stewardship Division. Joe Ayers is in the Support Services area. Lyndon handles Recreation. And then the external relations, we kind of have it split up as we show on the chart there. There are several different types of projects that we might undertake. We might just consult and recommend. If you have a puzzle we need to solve, you want some advice to get started, maybe some data protocols at the beginning, we can do that. We participate in work that is going on. This is, you know, a lot of the embedding that happens, the, the park police dashboard that's been, that's been rolling out, Lyndon has been participating in that. And sometimes we'll lead new projects. So there are new things coming along that we can take on as, as fully formed projects. And then just the way that we have devised to sort of intake this, to really kind of keep things organized in terms of what's coming in, is this flow chart. So it's a little bit hard to read, but we actually do have kind of a process that staff can see that lets them understand how to interact with the Data Insights Team. We've created a very simple sort of interest form. It's called an initial project request form. And based on that, the Data Insights Team kind of looks to see if it's actually a Data Insights project or not. And if it's not, then we kind of talk about some other channels for, for using that work. If it is, then we actually do a more detailed project intake in collaboration with the staff member who requested it. We don't expect everybody to be data experts, so we sit down with them and start to talk about what are the needs. And it's a two-way conversation, again, that collaboration that happens. We may take on that project right away if there's staff capacity or if it actually adds on to a new project. But if things are getting a little tight and the timing isn't quite right, then, then we would actually visit with the executive team to do prioritizations of the work that we have across the organization. Again, we don't want to be the ones to arbiter between kind of staff capacity fights between divisions. So there are times we will go to the executive team to help understand that. And then if the decision is to proceed, then we begin the project. So with that, I will conclude and open the floor for, well, I will return the floor to President Forney if there are any questions or discussions. Thanks for your time tonight.
Thanks for the floor. Commissioner Musich?
Thank you, President Forney. I don't have questions. I'm very excited to see this work moving forward. Part of my day job is working with data and deciding how to use it to make things work better. And seeing that happening here at the Park Board is very exciting. So thank you so much for your leadership on this, to your team, for the work that they're doing, and for everyone else at the institution that's taking the time to work with this team to try to improve the way you do work. It's a big shift in the mentality of how we do work, and I'm thrilled to see that people are getting on board. Thanks.
No, they're light. Ooh, what's wrong? I shouldn't have said anything. Commissioner Musich, oh gosh, okay.
Who got it first?
Oh, I said Menz, sorry.
I know. I'm sorry, Meg. My family gets mad at me too for talking too much. Thank you, President Forney and Twin. I'm so happy that you're excited. So, and just thank you for doing this work, because evaluating data is really important. The, the only thing that I worry about as a teacher is that data, the numbers part, can sometimes miss the anecdotal part. So, and how do you guys evaluate? Let me just maybe really quick, how do you take into account the story behind the data and then that anecdotal piece or that qualitative data that doesn't show up in numbers?
President Forney, Commissioner Menz, that, that's a great question. And I, I don't know that we have totally nailed down exactly how to do that, but I'll share a couple of different things. Firstly, our Data Insights Team members are in constant contact with folks that are tasked with some of those more anecdotal, story-like jobs at our organization. So the partnership between a person who's, can get really deep in the data and someone who's also really looking at, you know, that kid at that rec center and how were they served, which is very much a perspective that we have across the organization also, I think can start to blend those two things. The second thing I'll say is that we, we often use the mantra when we're, when we're talking internally about data within the Data Insights Team. We sort of, we sort of use the, one of the mantras that comes out in racial equity circles, which is you need to ask why at least three times, because the first why, like maybe puts it on the person. And the second why starts to put it more on society and starts to actually create solutions. And so we ask, like, why is the data that way? And if there's kind of an answer, then we ask, well, why is that answer that way? Why is it showing up that way? And we keep on asking why until we can dig back down into maybe making it more human again, as it were. But also, work in progress.
Commissioner Abene?
Just to, just to say, because no one was putting lights on, but this is great work and to keep going. And, and I'm glad you actually just had that conversation about equity, because I do think that being data-driven is critical. So there's the, the kind of the, the emotional part of all the work that this public organization does, but it has to start, I think, sometimes with kind of a clear-headed, objective analysis. That's so important. So keep, keep it up and thank you.
Commissioner Schaefer? Quick question. What opportunities or budget allowances are we giving the Data Insights Team? I know they're kind of new, coming together, to continue to expose themselves to other software tools that are out there, other people doing the same kind of work in other park systems or comparable businesses? I mean, are, how are we kind of, you know, helping their creativity grow?
Sure. President Forney, Commissioner Schaefer, the, the, when the Data Insights Team was created in the Strategic Planning Department, that department, department's budget was increased to obviously handle those staff salaries, but there were also some increases to, to education and materials and supplies that go along with it. In addition, in, in IT, we, we have more access to, to software. And a lot of times, those software purchases, like a recent subscription to a community builder, it's called, software with, that works with ArcGIS, often can be borne within the departmental budgets. So we haven't made specific requests for additional training or software, though we have been able to, through the Strategic Planning Department budget, provide some additional training to the Data Insights Team. Most notably, they all together went through what's called a Tufti seminar, which is about data visualization. And we got a whole bunch of tools and stuff. And so they were able to do that and we, we bore that within the departmental budget.
Adam, say again, what was that, asking three times, why?
Yeah, so the, President Forney, you know, one of the things that we've talked about, you know, kind of in, in our racial equity trainings and racial equity journeys is that, you know, if you ask, you know, the example kind of starts to get, like, there's the food desert example, where if you ask why, you know, more kids have diabetes on the North Side, you know, the first answer to that why question might be like, well, because, you know, they're not getting the right foods to eat, which puts blame on the parents. But then the second question, why aren't they getting enough good food to eat? Well, they may not have grocery stores near them, right? Or they may not have access to transportation to get to the healthy food areas. So, so then you start to get to actual urban-form problems that you can solve, that we wouldn't have looked at if we only asked the first why. And so that's where that kind of comes from. And I think it's true for a lot of different topic areas. It allows us to look at kind of what we can really change without putting blame on a particular individual for a personal choice that might actually be the result of societal inequities. And I think the same can be true of data. We need to ask why something is showing up in the data. We need to ask why multiple times. And sometimes that means more data collection to find out why.
Utterly awesome. Really, I mean, really, what you're doing, it, it just gets me so excited. I'm sorry if I have to insert this, but I only wish our Supreme Court would respond that way. Thank you. I don't see anymore.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Oh, sorry. Superintendent Bangora?
President Forney, thank you for just acknowledging this. I just want to say publicly how proud I am of Director Arvidson and the team. I couldn't be more proud of the work that he's doing, how he's leading. And as you saw by the example of his presentation, the thoughtfulness, the dedication, how he's mapped it out, how the team has just taken and embraced this. And they've done amazing work for the organization. And I just want to just acknowledge publicly, proud of Director Arvidson and the team. So, thanks.
Hurrah. Okay, I think we are getting close to the end of our agenda here. And so I am going to start with Commissioner Abene with petitions and communication.
I'll just say that I got to tour the South Operations Center. I think I'm saying that right. And my Assistant Superintendent Baric showed me around and some other people from the team. And I recommended to all of the Commissioners to go and see the actual physical place and the physical plant and just the breadth of the space, the activities happening in it. And it was, it was worth it. Thanks.
Commissioner Alper? Pass. Commissioner Menz, excuse me.
Thank you. I do have a couple of things today. So as I'm going through school and we're acknowledging indigenous cultures in our school, I wanted to refresh our memory that we collectively acknowledge the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board. System is located on the traditional and ancestral and contemporary lands of indigenous people. This land holds great historical and spiritual and personal significance for its original stewards, the native nations, and peoples of this region, including Dakota and Abjibwe people. That is taken from our Parks for All Comprehensive Plan. I'm really excited about the budget and the initiative of this board to create an acknowledgement statement in the coming year. And also, And also, hopefully facilitate a reconciliation plan or a start of that. I think that that's really important work that we have started this year. I also had that, we're going to the U-Sports, the superintendent talked about hockey this weekend in the Northeast Ice Arena. There's going to be 80 kids who are learning to skate on Northeast Ice Arena ice, which is amazing. It's because of the work of the Park Board allowing that space to be had for some local groups. And in case you all are not aware, if you're a Park Board, if you're a citizen of Minneapolis and you want some good hockey, go to North Commons. So, North Commons has run a program for hockey for decades by a man named Dale Hume, who is a community partner. It's determined as Park Board programming, but it's definitely been led by a group that's outside of the Park Board staff. Lastly, I'd like to also just make sure that we do acknowledge those things, that there's a lot of activity that happens in the winter, in the spring, in the fall, all season long, on our fields and in our playgrounds and in our rec centers that is provided by the Park Board. But it's also by outside groups that are Minneapolis residents who care about kids and youth. And providing those spaces is also really, really important for us as a Park Board. Lastly, I want all the workers out there to know that this board, the superintendent, anybody who in these negotiations has been challenged, we do appreciate you. You are very, the Park Board does not work without the workers doing the work in our parks, in our rec centers and everywhere. And I know that sometimes when these things come up, it's easy to feel underappreciated. And I know that every person that I speak with sees the value of our workers. And I just want you to know that you are valued. Thank you.
Commissioner Musich.
Pass.
Mr. Olson.
Pass.
Commissioner Schaefer.
I just want to mention that today I saw something I hadn't seen before. On the south end of Isles, when I was walking around, I saw the last portion of our dock by the canoes there, where the two benches are seating, floating halfway between the shoreline and the island. Just like two empty benches, you know, on the dock is floating. So, I'm not sure what's going on there, but I will.
It broke free.
Yeah, I will send my pictures to the, to staff. Or maybe Annie has an update for us.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is not my lane, but I'm going to tell you what's going on. Those pieces of dock are out there floating for the winter months. So, they've been removed by staff and were put on their moorings for the winter storage.
So, I've never seen them stored in the middle of the lake before.
Someone reached out tonight, and I was given that information.
They're literally in the center of the lake. With the benches.
We'll look into it.
Okay. And yeah, that's all I wanted to say. And thank you to the park police as well for some of the incidences they've been dealing with. We appreciate their proactiveness and support of our parks. That's it. Commissioner Thompson.
Yeah, I would like to say that I had the pleasure of going to see the Upper Harbor Terminal site with President Forney yesterday. It was really cool. I've never been a part of something wandering through where there's like dirt and rebar and old industrial stuff, and then shoreline coming in. So, I just wanted to take a moment to say how cool that was. And it's going to be really great. And I'm thankful also for MWMO and all their great, all the amazing, great partners, but that's the one that comes to mind right away. I also wanted to say Victory Memorial Drive did not have an official Park Board Halloween event, nor does it ever. But I would call it the unofficial Halloween headquarters of Minneapolis. If you've ever been there, Victory Memorial Drive regularly, I think any, every house, you get between 300 and 500 children hitting any house. And there's a lot of activity, so that was fun. I also just want to say on a more sobering note, I was invited to partake in a community engagement at North High a week ago around safety and how we can all collaborate. And then the very next day, one of the students at South High where I'm teaching was hit by gunfire on the street, on Lake Street. And I know that I'm not alone in this, and it just serves as a reminder of how, how much and just re, I guess it's, I would challenge my colleagues and myself and everybody for how we can better serve our kids from all ages. It's a challenge, and I don't have the answers. But it's, there's still a great need for that. And it's, personally, it's very heartbreaking to be in those intersections. I would also, lastly, like to echo what Commissioner Menz said about our workers and how much we value you and we hear you. And I thank you for taking the time tonight. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Vice President Smith.
I have so much I want to say, but my mouth is really hurting. So, I will keep it very brief. One thing, I know Market Square has not like officially been handed over to the Park Board yet, but our archway went in today for the farmer's market. So, it's super beautiful and super exciting. Again, it activates the space at Lake Nihawata where we operate, by we, I mean, the neighborhood organization operates the farmer's market, which is unfortunately where the most recent shooting and stabbing happened within days of each other, where my office was subjected to gunfire, and we lost a couple of windows, no people. So, we're thankful for that. It is a challenge for us to continue to improve and have exciting programming for young people to be engaged in. Not just young people, but all people. I think folks are looking for safe space to be a community, and that is exactly what the parks are. And so, we have to somehow draw community back into this space that is absolutely theirs, where they feel welcome, where they feel safe, where they feel open to just engage and converse with one another, and just sit around and talk, like, like people do at the YMCA, like the seniors, the silver sneaker people do at the Y. They drink coffee. They never work out. But they hang out, right? Like, maybe they do it some wise. But at all the YMCA's that I go to, they're just sitting, drinking coffee, catching up. And it's a space for them to be safe and be engaged. And so, I think that we have to figure out, how are we drawing in our communities in all of our local parks? Just especially given what is happening in our city. And I'd also like to reiterate with our colleagues, like, how important the staff are to the success of what we do every day. So, I don't take you all for granted. I'm sure none of my colleagues do. But we thank you, and we ask for grace and patience as we navigate to ensure that we keep all of our people feeling connected and valued in this space.
I too went on the tour of the Upper Harbor, which, by the way, we hope that we'll find a name for. Upper Harbor Terminal doesn't quite do it for me. Anyway, it was very exhilarating. I mean, I've been involved with this for a couple of decades, and I thank AFCCAC, I thank the city, I thank the foundation. I mean, really, that's why I love this job. It's so tangible, and we get to see, you know, what we have envisioned for years. So, it's just such an exhilarating thing. So, thank you, Julie Aldridge and Andy Shilling for taking us on it. It was wonderful. If you have an opportunity, you know, to see what's happening up there, it's thoroughly exciting. I'm also excited about the Barnes Dance. And it's also known as the pedestrian scramble, which is down at the south end of Bede-McCoska, West Bede-McCoska Parkway and William Berry, and Richfield Road, that whole intersection. That seed was planted by a very, very good friend of mine, Harvey Zuckman, and Deb Bartle, who is a retired planner, seized it and has put it into the master plan. And so, things can happen. People just realize that. But this is the first ever in Minneapolis. I don't even know if there's one in St. Paul, a Barnes Dance, which is named after a guy by the name of Barnes, by the way. Anyway, it's just a really fun, fun thing to see. So, please drive down and see it for yourself or walk through it. And then I also just want to announce that I will be going to the World Urban Park Congress. And that's from 14th to the 18th. It's in Mexico. I'm very, very excited. It is definitely, everybody has to know, it's on my own dime, so I'm paying for it. What's also exciting is that our former superintendent, Jane Miller, is the president of the Congress. And so, I'm really delighted. I find it, though, kind of funny that it's called the Urban Park. Somehow, that seems like an oxymoron to me. Anyway, so with that, I will declare the meeting adjourned and move to Administration-Finance.
The time is 8:40, and I'd like to call the Admin-Finance Committee to order. Secretary Ringel, can you take the role?
Vice President Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Menz.
Here.
Co-Chair Thompson.
Here.
Co-Chair Schaefer.
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
May I have a motion to approve the agenda this evening? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Tonight, we have two action items, which we are very excited about. And we're going to have presentations on, I'm sure. May I have a committee member, please move the first action item?
I'll move Resolution 2022-307, Resolution to Approve a Five-Year Lease Agreement with GWGDWG LLC DBA, The Painted Turtle, to operate the concession facility at the Lake Nacomas, at the Lake Nacoma. Yeah, beginning on January 1st, 2023.
Thank you. Director Stenzel.
Thank you, Commissioners, Co-Chair Schaefer and Thompson. Just going to pull this up here real quick. All right, so before I use an action, to consider entering into a five-year lease agreement with The Painted Turtle to operate the concession facility at Lake Nacomas. As many recall, the Sand Castle operated there for the last 10 years. And I just want to publicly thank Doug Flicker and Amy Greeley for their 10 years of service at this facility. They decided this year was their last year, and so, they gave us notice at the beginning of the year. They did an amazing job taking what was once a dilapidated building and converted into what you see today at that location. So, just wanted to thank them. Just a kind of a quick, real brief history here. We issued an RFP in June for a new operator. We received 11 proposals for review. We convened a committee to review those in August, and they consisted of the neighborhood residents around the lake, as well as a few staff members, key staff members. From the 11, five proposals were invited for an interview from the committee. And the committee unanimously selected the thirsty dog, I mean, excuse me, The Painted Turtle as their selection. I'll just point out that the concept didn't change, but the name we asked that they changed. We didn't want the perception that it was a dog park. And while, of course, dogs are welcome in our parks on a leash, we didn't want folks to think that the concession operation actually went to the dogs. So, we negotiated out a new, a new name, which became The Painted Turtle. One thing that I will point out in the agreement, if you read it, is there's a little statement about alcohol. And one thing that we learned in this process just recently was, is that there's some compliance issues with serving alcohol at this location. I can report that today I met with the city onsite, and we think we have an agreement with some slight modifications to what's already there. So, not looking to build something new or add. But actually, just modifying was there that they think that would satisfy the requirement for liquor. So, the state requires, and the city through their ordinance requires 25 seats covered. We thought we had that. We were under the impression for the last 10 years it was fine. But evidently, the state inspector came at some point this year and said, no, that we needed to modify it a little more. So, we'll be looking into that. But I did write that into the contracts. If you had any questions about that, why it says eight, like eight and a half percent, if they don't get a liquor license versus the 12, that's the reason why. But I have all the confidence that we will get that this spring. And with that, I would just like to introduce the team. Sam Carter, Don Yurimovich, and Kevin Knutson. And I'm just going to have them come up and talk a little bit about their concept, and just a little bit about themselves and what Painted Turtle is. So, I'll just hit the arrow down.
Sounds good. Yes, you guys have been through a lot today, so I'll try and make this pretty quick. The Painted Turtle, there was some confusion about the thirsty dog when Shannon said a dog park. We run a dog park, so that's kind of where part of the confusion came from. So, I know if you're thinking, why would people think that's a dog park? Well, if they know us, they might think it's a dog park. So, we ended up going with The Painted Turtle, obviously based on all those adorable turtles that pop up on the logs as you walk around Lake Nacomas. Our mission, The Painted Turtle is committed to creating an establishment centered around our community and the modern family. We want everyone who walks past our building to feel a sense of belonging and pride in their community. At The Painted Turtle, quality food and drinks are our business, fun is our passion, and you are our most important guest. I'll keep this brief. I'm not going to read the slide. Kevin and I worked together, what, six years ago? Came up the idea to do Unleashed, the off-leash dog park, got Don involved, who's my mother. She's a longtime restaurant executive. That concept took off after tons of trial and error. And six weeks later, COVID shut us down. We've battled, we've clawed our way back to this point. We saw the opportunity on Nacomas. Don's a lifelong South Minneapolis resident. I'm a lifelong South Minneapolis resident. I went to South. I was a proud member of plenty of losing, linehurst Park Board teams. I don't know if they're any better now, but for 10 years, they weren't very good. Maybe I was the problem. But yeah, so we saw it as a really good opportunity. Something I think that the committee probably liked about us is we're going to bring a lot of our staff over. I know staffing has been a big problem with all these concepts. A lot of our staff are wanting hours in the summer, because that's our slow season at our dog park. And a lot of them are really eager to come over and bring that kind of professional cohesive edge to it. We obviously want to bring in community kids and, you know, help them have their first summer job and stuff like that. But we definitely have a staff that we trust who's going to come in and implement our standards as well. The space, you know, Doug and Amy had done a lot of work. It obviously needs some touch-ups after 12 years. Exterior updates, we'd like to do a fresh coat of paint with just some lighter colors, but still vibrant to catch the eye. We want to do a small artistic mural facing the walking path. We're going to close off one of those ordering windows and kind of make it a wall, so we can have that canvas, just as kind of an art piece. Extended patio featuring views of the lake. If you guys are familiar, the concrete patio ends, but there's all that side to the right if you're facing the lake, and there's some really good lake views. We would like to extend, probably not a concrete patio, but probably a wood patio that would just be, you know, on grade with that, with that concrete. Yeah, that could change depending on what has to happen with the beer and wine stuff. One thing we like about this plan is it'll give us a more defined barrier as we kind of put up a safety railing alongside that patio, because it's a pretty steep hill. That would sort of give that built-in fence without it really being a fence, because it's, there is a safety measure. But it's also something we can use to control the flow of alcohol, so it's not getting out into the park where it's not supposed to be. And then upgrade landscaping is needed. Just interior updates, we want to upgrade the lights, deep clean the space and revitalize it, paint, get rid of some of those old plastic windows that have started to fade in the sun, things like that. We want to add a storefront window just to increase visibility into the inside. Part of our plan is to include a ice cream scoop shop, which we'd like to put in front of that window, so you can kind of have that feeling of watching people scoop your ice cream through the big glass window. And it's not like you're just picking a flavor off of a menu, and then someone's disappearing and then coming back out with it. And then obviously, built-in storage for more efficient operation. Doug and Amy had said that was their number one problem, is storage, 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 storage. So, working with our contractor, he's got a guy who has all these ideas for how we could maximize storage in that space, considering how small it is. We also have storage at Unleashed, our location, which is only 10 minutes away, that we'll be able to utilize as well. And then these are just some guestimates based on the things we've been getting. And I threw the little mural mock-up that we had our friend John do for us. It's obviously, none of this is totally finalized yet, but it's all in the ballpark. Interior upgrades would be maximum 100,000, exterior 75. Equipment, 75 to 100, depending on what we need to do and what we need to repurpose from what we bought. And then miscellaneous upgrades, that's just kind of a contingency budget for what we might need to do. And then food and drink, we're committed to using locally sourced products. So, Lala's Ice Cream has agreed to be a partner of ours. That's a single-location scoop shop, makes her own ice cream. You know, we're not going to do Blue Bunny from US Foods if we can avoid it. Our menu feature, classics, but kind of our own take on American fare. We don't like to do burgers. That's kind of our menu philosophy. We like to do fun things with other stuff, because I think you can get a good burger anywhere. And we could make a good burger, but we can also make really good things that people have never really tried before in combinations that they haven't really seen. that they haven't really seen, as well as doing classics. You know, that middle photo there has like a chicken and waffle sandwich, which is really good, that we've done a few times, ice cream sundaes, picnic food for the beach, things like that.
My adorable grandson.
Yeah, GDWG LLC is a shout-out to Dawn, who likes to be called G-Dog by my grandson. And since she's putting up some money, she decided she wanted to name the LLC. So that's why that's the way that is. We want to take a modern approach to driving traffic. Obviously, there's a lot of built-in traffic that comes into the park system every day, but our specialty at Unleashed has been building a community. Being the first of its kind business in the state, we sort of had to build our own community ourselves, using a lot of modern marketing techniques. You know, right now, we have an email list of 25,000 dog owners, which I know is not the purpose of the Nacomas location, but it's just to highlight how good we are at collecting these types and driving traffic. We have between the two about 17,000, 18,000 followers on social media. We had done an Indiegogo campaign before ever opening Unleashed that raised almost $50,000. These sorts of techniques are what we're gonna use to draw additional people to our location as opposed to just capturing the people walking past. And then one of the things we're really most proud of is our commitment to community. Right now, we do most of our commitment with the dog community, right, because that's kind of our business. You know, we've given close to $30,000 in the last few years to dog-related causes and dog-related charities. We want to take the programs that we've done to raise that money and implement them at The Painted Turtle with community organizations. So they wouldn't be the dog organizations anymore, they would be community organizations that can come in and raise funds for their organizations, and we can help facilitate that as well. Kind of our mainstay is Drink for a Dog, which we call Drink for a Cause, obviously, because it's not for a dog. Where 10% of all proceeds from food and drink go to that organization, and all we ask is that they post something on their socials and say, hey, we're doing this over here, and then if they could have a representative there to explain, you know, in better terms what it is that their organization does. Those are only the only two asks that we have. You know, we've had a couple organizations who've gotten a couple, a few grand a year from us from doing it because they, you know, they drive traffic and people love them. And then we also want to, as an ode to our dog friends, do a dog treat program where we'll sell custom homemade dog treats, and the profits, all the profits from those will go to donations as well. So that's where you capture your people walking by with their dog, you know, buy a $3 dog treat, and all of a sudden, $1.50 goes to charity. We figure it's a small part of our business, but it would be a good nod to where we came from, and I think people would really dig it once it starts going. And yeah, that was my brief presentation.
Thank you very much. That's really exciting to see that all laid out. And Commissioner Musich has a question.
I do. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Co-Chair Schaefer, I'm not on this committee, but I appreciate the opportunity. As the district commissioner for this location, I've been getting lots and lots of questions about who you are and what you're planning to do with the space, and what the menu is going to be, and if some of the things that people love are going to be continued. So, yeah. When will folks be able to see a menu for what's coming in 2023 when you open?
I would say the menu that we presented is probably 80% complete. I know we need to sit down with some of our food purveyors over the next month. I think December is when we're meeting with... No, but, no, he moved it. Mid-December is when we're meeting with the big one. But, I mean, we can probably get 90% of it out in the next couple of weeks with some tweaks here or there.
Is it like the popcorn and the pretzels and what?
I think people are just very curious about what type of food options are going to be available here.
I saw something from Nextdoor today, so there was some chatter on Nextdoor.
Yeah, chatter on Nextdoor.
Shane hasn't really let us talk that much about it.
If you wouldn't mind standing by the mic, because anyone that's watching us on TV won't be able to hear you. That's okay. Thanks.
We've wanted to kind of make it a little bit more public, but due to not being 100% approved yet, we haven't been able to really come out the way we wanted to. But like I said, I just saw some chatter on Nextdoor, literally while we were sitting here, about curiosity about it and everything. So, once the time's right, we'd be happy to make it public in any way that you think would be the most effective.
Okay, so sometime after November 30th, folks can keep an eye out for that information. I assume that we'll be given a website or Facebook page or other social media accounts that we can then share out with the public so that they can get their questions answered. One of the things that people are very much hoping will stay, that I've been hearing from lots of folks, is that the rotating tap shack with Minnesota beers, that that would be continued as a tradition in that location. Can you speak to that at all?
That is my specialty, is Minnesota beer. So, no, I currently at Unleashed, we run 12 tap lines. I keep six of them on that are constant great Minnesota beers, and we move six through constantly, too. So, all local, very close, everything from inbound all the way up to Castle Danger, all over the place. So, we love the local. I do tons with self-distributors, got great relationships everywhere there.
Fantastic. Maybe go a little bit further north and include Voyager, because they've got a great brown ale.
I've had some of their stuff, yes.
Let's see. There has been, since, I'm sure, since we opened this location as a concession, problems with wildlife being fed product from the concessionaire. Are you aware of this issue? Do you intend to put together an action plan to ensure that this is minimized in whatever way possible? Because when kids are attacked by ducks on the beach, I get those calls. So I would love to mitigate that as much as possible, because not only is it not fun for kids to get attacked by ducks, but for those of you that aren't aware, ducks that eat people food are unhealthy. They produce offspring that are even more unhealthy. It's very damaging to the population of wildlife in the city. In addition, they don't go anywhere. Once they start eating, they will stay in that location. This is right next to a beach. And when we have populations of ducks that don't leave, we start seeing people with swimmer's itch. The bathrooms here are, they're not great. A lot of people don't like going in them, so anything we can do to mitigate the health problems caused by ducks eating people food would be great. So I'd love to hear from you about that issue.
We certainly were warned. Doug and Amy made that very clear when we talked with them. I believe that in expanding the patio and making a more cohesive barrier, that's going to help a little bit with the wandering wildlife problem. Obviously, it's not gonna eliminate it entirely, but I think that will help. I think education of our staff is going to be a big part of it. It's tough to control what a child throws on the ground. And yeah, and we have the signage that's there. We also have a marketing team that specializes in, you know, catching, eye-catching graphics and stuff like that. You know, an A-frame sign with a photo of a duck can only do so much to capture someone's attention and inform them. You know, we have no problem putting an investment into the space to making sure that there's appropriate and well-designed signage, so people catches their eye, they read it, they understand the problem, and they hopefully don't feed the ducks.
I also think what Kim Bartman did at Lake Harriet was pretty effective. I don't know how many of you guys, she's got those ducks on each table, and then she's got that big duck that's out right in the lake right there. And that used to be my lake before I moved into Lake Nacomas neighborhood, and it made a significant difference of people feeding the ducks once she put all those things out there. So I think we'd be open to doing something similar to that as well.
Okay, so hopefully Mr. Stenzel can connect you with the environmental staff that actually installed all of that.
Yep.
Because I do think it would be helpful to have more visual cues, because as much as I talk to people about bloody diarrhea and swimmer's itch, it's not super appetizing. So other things, I think, would be more helpful. Then the last thing that I had was just, I'm excited to see orange is still in the logo. It's, I didn't know if it would stay, because it was kind of a bright, intense piece of the building, and it's really grown on me. So I'm glad to see that you're incorporating that into your concept. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Musich, and Commissioner Olson.
Yeah, awesome. Very excited for this. This is kind of a message for both places. I would really encourage robust vegetarian and/or vegan options for folks, just to make sure it's accessible and accessible. We're pro-climate, board, being able to have options that have less carbon emissions, things like that would be great. So just for both of y'all, if you could make sure we have some delicious options. I used to be a strict vegetarian for like eight years. I kind of fell off during COVID, but you know. Anyway, thank you so much, and I wish you all the luck. It sounds great.
Commissioner?
I was just gonna say, yeah, if we could speak to that just briefly. One of our letters of recommendation were from Rivers Butcher, who we do a lot of work with, to provide vegan options. Lala's Ice Cream also provides, I think, three or four vegan flavors right now. Definitely two of those will carry, will carry as a standard flavor for people who either can't have dairy or want to be vegan.
Okay, Commissioner Mens.
Thank you, Co-Chair Schaefer. What would your waste disposal plan be?
We obviously haven't gotten into the details of it quite yet. That's kind of one of those conversations, that once we get into the operational plan of it, we're gonna sit down with Doug and Amy and figure out what worked and what didn't work. Obviously, do as much composting and recycling as possible. That's something we do at our current location, but exactly how that's gonna look at the location, I'm not entirely sure. But definitely, we do plan on having a comprehensive composting and recycling plan.
And do you plan to make sure that your customers make sure to dispose? Like, will there be a way for that to be maintained at the space? I mean, I worry, I always worry about the waste disposal issues, especially near the bodies of water, and I'm gonna ask vendors this all the time from now on, because I think that single-use plastic and all that stuff is something we need to move away from. But thank you, I appreciate that. I also have a question for Mr. Stenzel. So can you just give me a little bit of a brief synopsis of the racial equity toolkit that staff uses?
Yeah, Co-Chairs Schaefer and Thompson, Commissioner Mens. Yeah, so when we put the committee together, we look at what represents the community, who represents the community. We reach out to, because it's a regional park, we reach out to others to come together to be on the committee. We had a really, we struggled this year, to be honest with you, to get members to be on the committee, just because of the time commitment. So we reached out to the African-American community, the Native American community, Nacomas East Neighborhood Association, the Standish Erickson Neighborhood Association, Field Regina Neighborhood Association, Friends of Lake Nacomas, Hale Page Diamond Lake Community Association, asking all those for an appointment when we put this together, because we really truly want a representation of not only neighborhood, but regional as well. And we had a lot of decline because of just timing and just the commitment. So we really struggled to try to put a cohesive group together, and we were able to do it, but a lot of it was, came from the neighborhood, to be honest with you, in that J scenario. But that's what we look at.
Commissioner Smith, Vice President Smith.
Thank you. I have a ton of questions centered around what Commissioner Mens was speaking about in terms of racial equity. Because in my day job, I know that those neighborhood organizations that you reached out to are 90% white, so they don't reach the demographic that also attend and frequent the space, because I live, too, in the area. And so I am concerned about that, and community members have brought forth several complaints around this process, feeling very unfair and very rigged towards what appears to be another white restaurateur showing up before us that we're providing space to. So my question is, what was used? If we didn't have the demographics that we needed in terms of the racial equity tool, why did we not place this process on hold?
Commissioner, Co-Chair Schaefer and Thompson, Vice President Smith. When we put the committee together, we did have that conversation about representation, and we looked at what we did in best practices with some of our other locations. Again, we did reach out and ask various groups if they would like to be part of this process and going through it. One thing I will say is, in some things that we learned, you know, just from the sense of the actual proposals, is that it's really hard right now for lots of groups to get into the business of restaurants, given the economic climate. We heard that quite frequently in a lot of our outreach to folks, to try to get proposals. We really wanted a mixture of folks to put in, but the uncertainty with staffing came up a lot, and the volatility of the market right now of just, of providing goods and services. And so that's one that we have to look at kind of more internally as well, to say, okay, where are our gaps? Where are our barriers? Like, and being in this economic climate right now, you know, it's, talking with a lot of our other concessionaires, and even tonight, they were talking about menu, it's hard to even put a menu together right now because, I don't know if you've been to the grocery store, but what used to be $2 for a pack of butter is now $4 for butter, and that is just a matter of weeks. So we really tried hard to reach out to as many as we could. We sent to over 2,000 licensed vendors in the city. We also made lots of phone calls. My staff made calls. We talked to all the food truck folks. We did have a few of those that did put in, and then, you know, but when we went through the actual, looking at the financials and the actual proposal, they just, financially, it just didn't make sense. And so, you know, hopefully, hopefully that with the, you know, time here and with the economy, that things kind of open up and we do allow for more. I mean, I will point out that we are very proud of the five minority currently that we have, vendors that we have in our system, you know, and at the golf courses, and then the contract that's coming before you next, and some of our food trucks. So we work hard to try to find candidates as well as, but when it comes to the committee piece of it, again, we looked at it, we offered the invites, and why we didn't, why we didn't stop at that point, I guess I can't answer that. We kept moving along because we were running out of time.
That's fine. Who in the black community did you reach out to? So when you say that, I'm curious, because I'm in the black community, and I only learned about it through someone else. And as a commissioner who sits on this board, knowing my market and knowing what I do, it would make sense, when you talk about the black community, I am often referred to as that. So I'm curious of what leadership you reached out to.
Yeah, Co-Chairs Thompson and Schaefer, Vice President Smith. So we reached actually out to our five current vendors and asked if they were A, gonna put in, and B, if they could recommend somebody that maybe would sit on this as being park vendors. And the response that we got was, yeah, you know, let us know the dates, and then as it got closer, they started dropping out. COVID played a big piece of it, too. We had some that were lined up. We reached out to the sous chef. I was hoping that they would sit in on it, and again, they just didn't have the time and the bandwidth to dedicate to do this process. And like I said, even within the neighborhoods, we had a hard time, just people just couldn't make that commitment. So the commitment was to review for a week, then the commitment then was then to come together and talk about all the proposals based off of a ranking that we put together that was with the RFP. And then from there, we then had a Zoom meeting to go through, and then we talked about each one of them, and then decided how many we were gonna interview. And we, so we can interview them all, we can interview five, we can interview, whatever. I left it to the committee. And then the committee decided that five is where they wanted to interview. And then, at that point, the five came in, so that was another two nights of interviews, and we dedicated a third. And again, it was just a matter of, you know, they just didn't, they just, like I said, people were dropping out on us. We delayed the process once, because again, we sent this out in June, so July is when we started, and then all of a sudden, next thing you know, we had people drop, and so we were trying to find people to get on it, and then August. You know, is there, would there be, could there be a better way or something like that? I'd be open to that, but again, we try to invite everybody into this process.
I get it. No, I appreciate that, Shane. And this is no condemnation of you. This is an actual condemnation of the system and a process that we're using, where we are literally failing the people of color and opportunity to further sustain an economically growth. And because I am aware of this, and because, again, who I am in community, I get this information, and so I appreciate the five minority people of color that we have that are represented in our parks. I also am concerned that when I hear things like the process in which we use for this particular location, which is the first one that I'm actually involved in as an elected, was extremely flawed and inequitable. Those words... Those words concern me as the only black woman sitting up here. It is my responsibility, my duty, and I carry the hell out of this load, not only for black people, but for all the people of color that I have to represent, where our voices are not here at this table. And so I am concerned. I will not be voting for this, because it is alarming. I think we have to address the process. And equity is not something that I can shrug my shoulders at. I can't just go, well, we didn't have it. Damn it, we wait until we do or we don't at all. That's, that's the end of it. I appreciate you doing your job, Shane. And I will absolutely, personally, be providing some guidance, not only to you, but to Superintendent Bangora. Because once again, what it feels like is the parking wreck continues to turn their back on communities of color. And this is what I hear, day in and day out. And I never get tired of hearing it, and I wish I could not hear it.
Thank you, Vice President Smith. Commissioner Mens for the second time.
Thank you, Co-Chair Schaefer. Just, I cannot reiterate Vice President Smith's comments, and I don't want to try to. But I do want to say that it does feel like there are some processes, and this is not the only process that we have in our park system that doesn't feel like we're truly being racially equitable. And it doesn't mean that this business and this proposal wasn't very valid and a good, could be a good place for Nakomus. But I worry that in our park system, when we create spaces or we continue to propagate spaces that feel really, really white, that we keep people away from those spaces like Lake Nakomus from entering. And I think that at Worth Park, we're doing a little bit better job, that there are places where designated white spaces are becoming more diverse because of who we're choosing to put in those spaces. And it is nothing against the business that is presented here. Your proposal is, is great. But I'm just very, very concerned about how our spaces look in the city and how we're working actively to change those spaces so that it is more equitable, so that we are providing some sort of systemic reparation around where people are located and who feels welcome where. I will not be voting for the proposal.
Thank you, Commissioner Mens. Commissioner Thompson, Co-Chair Thompson.
Thank you, Co-Chair Schaefer. I want to start all this, I have some brass tacks questions, and I have a commentary on that. I want to say, this has nothing to do with your, with your venue and your great proposal. I, as the person who represents the North Side, we don't have any refactories at all. I mean, I'd love to change that in my tenure, but like, so when I see that the committee was made up of neighborhood people, I immediately think, well, how do we change this if we're always, if we're looking around, right around Nakomus? How, this is a, in my, in my waxing poetic, this is a missed opportunity, because I believe that the change we seek as a community is about integrating spaces. And right now, I see it every day. The best incubator of integration happens in schools, and young people, as always, shoulder the burden of the adult world's problems. But here's an opportunity where we could get people doing north to south. And there are restaurants up there that could make, that could make a place there, and people could go, oh, where, oh, this is the second location. Where's the other one? Oh, it's on West Broadway, you know? This is where my mind goes, of how we can better come together as a community. And I personally feel like, as a park system, that there is something structurally wrong, that it's like, we just took a big whiff at kind of a softball, in my mind. On to my brass tacks questions. Love this space. It's my favorite one in our system. Phil, and I love a good beer. There's, this is the location that is the closest to any beach. Do we have just like an overview of what we plan to do for safety? Have we, have, this is a parks question, not, but like, but obviously you'd be partners in this, so maybe anyone can answer. Safety with lifeguards and aquatic staff? And do we have, like, because patrons don't necessarily know the difference, right? They wander up to one location or the other. And then also, there's issues with people bringing the alcohol down onto the beach. And now lifeguards have to patrol that. Do we have sort of high-level view on that?
Yeah, Co-Chair Thompson, we do. I mean, we've, we've learned a lot with the last tenant that was there at Hall Alcohol, because they served alcohol, too. And so, and it's part of their licensure that they cannot leave the space. They need to police that. So the license, when they pull their liquor license says, you have to have a bounty. And this is with all of our concessions. And it's, they're up to them to police it. And if it leaves, they could lose their liquor license. But we also do a lot with signage. We also work with them on education and where it goes and how you serve it. So you know, you don't serve it on the beach side, you serve it on the backside. So that gives that much more opportunity to have to walk through. But, I mean, that's the last thing we want to, is alcohol on the beach. It just doesn't belong there. So again, with signage, barriers, education, that type of thing, yes. And then we also talk with our lifeguards. We haven't had any issues that I'm aware of in the last 10 years. If it has migrated over, it's been rectified right away to say, hey, you know, it's gotta come back over here. So, and, and I don't anticipate with price points, people are gonna be walking out with handfuls of beers. You know, typically at price points of $7 to $8, it's, it's one, and it's kind of one and done or two. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's a concern of ours, and we will talk about that when we open. We will look at that signage. But again, we did the same thing with the last tenant there, and it wasn't an issue.
And this might not even be a question for you, but just no matter who gets in there, structurally, the beach has two lifeguard towers. And the closest one to that location, there's still a pretty sizable bandwidth of beach. And I, I mean, I personally saw, I think I even talked about it, like, people bringing alcohol down to the beach in that space. And it takes quite a bit for the lifeguard to leave their tower, walk over and say something to them. Is there any way that, that we would, I'm going back to lifeguards, have enough staff to have someone closer to that location even for that? Or would eyes on the, in the building be that way?
Commissioner, Co-Chair Thompson. It's ultimately their responsibility as the liquor license holder to make sure and guard against that from going out. And so I really lean heavy on all of our concessionaires to say, listen, if you, you're gonna pull a license, you're responsible for people leaving this premise. And if something happens, that's your liability. And then you can risk it, and then through inspections and that type of thing. So, you guys can add to it, because you guys have that.
Yeah.
So currently, at our current location, we're partnered with the Farmer's Market Annex, which is a spinoff of the Minneapolis Farmer's Market. It's a whole thing. But part of what we do there is a beer garden, and part of that beer garden is beer is not allowed into the Farmer's Market. So our staff and us as individuals are, A, very comfortable going up to people and being like, hey, you have to stay in this barrier. Sorry, it's a liquor license thing. And we're very attentive and aware of it, because it's an issue we deal with in the summer every weekend. And so far, I don't think we've had any issues with it that I'm aware of. Nothing's ever come across. We stop people every week. Our staff stops people every week and kind of turns them around, explains to them what the situation is. So it's something we're really comfortable with. We also don't just plan to have our staff sitting in the building. You know, we want to hire really outgoing, energetic people who can walk around and table-touch, for lack of a better term, and say, you know, how are things? What can we do better? Things like that. And then those people can keep an eye out for your rogue person walking away with a beer and catch them before they get to the point where a lifeguard might have to get involved and say, hey, you need to go back over there.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah.
I know I only have five seconds, but I would like to say, I would like to make a motion to postpone this. I, I want to give space for Vice President Smith's concerns. And I also want to honor you guys, and I would hate to see this not get out of committee because we rushed the vote.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Smith, Vice President Smith, I'll get it right. I'd like you to go for the second time, and then we're gonna go to Commissioner Musich, since she is not on the committee.
Okay, thank you. Since you all are here, questions, the beach gets quite diverse folks that come. Some where English is not their first language. Based on your staff that I see here, what is your, your plan for racial diversity and the language barrier?
Yeah, for sure. So as far as the racial, or as far as the language barrier is concerned, we have two people who we're gonna be bringing on as seasonal managers. Both are fluent in Spanish. One guy is, is half Hispanic himself. So that would be one thing. We have a few staff members as well. So that's how we would address that aspect. And one thing we, we're very conscious of when we were putting the proposal together was, what Doug and Amy did was really great, but not everybody who is going to Lake Nakomus can afford $18 ceviche, right? So we were keeping that, we're trying to keep that in mind when we create our menu, so that it's a, that not only is there something for everyone as far as diversity of cuisine, right, things that appeal to people, but also things that everyone can afford, and things that are family-friendly. You know, in our mission statement, we wanted to create a place for the modern family. You know, that includes both having a diverse staff, a diverse menu, and a menu that is affordable for everybody.
And specifically, I'm not worried about our Spanish-speaking brothers and sisters, but I am worried about our East African Somali brothers and sisters that you maybe are not connected with yet. So these are real concerns, because that is my park, that is my beach. That is my community, and these are the folks that go to the park. And I want them to feel welcome. As Commissioner Mens mentioned, some of these spaces in our parks feel very white-only. We will not perpetuate that. That, that will not, I won't continue to be a part of that.
That's a good question. So when Commissioner Musich asked about the menu, part of the reason it isn't 100% complete is because we do want to do some community conversations about, what would you guys like to see on this menu? What did you like that was there? What have you not seen on a menu in a park? That would be something that would be welcoming to you. And as part of that, we were hoping that we'd be able to connect with the, kind of the youth of the neighborhood for jobs and on-the-job training and that kind of thing. I've been in the restaurant business my whole life. So part of what I pride myself on is being able to take kids and turn them into managers or upper management or whatever, and having some kind of an on-the-job training program. So we've talked about being able to reach out to the community, get maybe some of these lower-income kids or kids who maybe aren't getting an opportunity because like, English isn't their first language, and give them an opportunity to work their way up through us and work in the park system. So we also, you know, we pay better than average wage. We've always paid better than average wage, so we have a great starting pay. We have very little turnover at our current operations. So part of our next steps, if you will, is to get more into that community and find out exactly, what do you want from us? What do you need from us to make you feel welcome? And to make you feel like you're part of, of the bigger picture.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate your attention to it and the longevity of your career. It is really important to me. I cannot stress how important it is that beyond the fact that if you, if you don't reach beyond that community, folks come in, they commute into that community. So you're gonna have to find yourself in the Cedar Riverside community, intentionally building relationships, culturally being sensitive. And you may not be welcome, you present as a white woman. I'm, I'm not saying you are. You may be something else. But, so those things you guys are gonna need to start to do, like, back in July. And so how are you, let, this is just me giving you a piece of advice. Be intentional.
I'm welcome, I'm welcoming.
Be intentional about the relationships that you build, and make sure that the culture of your organization can support young people of color coming into a space where they don't feel isolated and they don't feel tokenized, because they may be the only, or there may be two or three of people. So, so ensuring that those sort of things don't happen, especially with such a young workforce, because young people are extremely resilient and intuitive and amazing. And so we don't want to create a world full of workers. We want to create a world where young people understand that they can build their own dream.
Oh, I want them to see that there's something else. I started flipping burgers. I've had my first job at McDonald's, and when people make fun of that, it's like, yeah, well, guess what? That's what I did too, pal. So I'm, I'm very big about making sure that people understand there's a development path in this industry. And I think it's a great opportunity for people if they get with the right folks. And I think we're the right folks in regards to developing, nurturing talent, and keeping them part of the fold. And that was the other part of our deal, is we've got unleashed during the off-season. So this, this doesn't necessarily have to be a summer job. You, you know, you excel here, we can flip you over to the other, to the other park, you know? So we're looking at quite a growth opportunity for the right people in the right spots.
Yep. All right, Commissioner Olson for the second time.
Yeah, thank you for raising these, these points, Vice President Smith. Yeah, so in speaking of, you know, Muslim, the Muslim community and making sure, you know, the food is kind of representative and welcoming, you know, just a suggestion of, you know, making sure food is halal and stuff like that. And, you know, I think, you know, I think I will be voting for this. I will be supporting it, because while the process may be flawed, I think on a certain level, I believe through this process, we have found folks who will be able to make this space a success in something that will be, you know, embraced by community. And success also in the, you know, business sense of being financially, you know, solvent and something that adds to the park board so that we can, you know, continue to fund other great things that we need to at the park board. But being a success is also many of the things that were brought up as well. And, you know, serving the entire community. So I will be supporting it. I think it will be a success. And I think especially so if you take, you know, the advice that is brought up to heart. But yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Co-Chair Thompson for the second time.
Thank you, Co-Chair Schaefer. I will, I will concede right now to the room that I am, I am facing a personal conundrum, because we've already had two colleagues say they're not gonna support this. And one, and I'm making an assumption, probably a broad one of another, supporting it. And I, I know that were we to start this process over again, we might not even have a vendor in time for the start of the season. And I don't want to see us do that for community. And at the same time, I think that we have, we have some, and it, I, it's, we have some, some issues that I'd like to see rectified, starting with the committee and how it's formed, just in general, and that we're exceedingly proactive. So I, I will be supporting this with an asterisk, because, and also asking that you would consider burgers. Thank you.
I just want to say one thing if I can, can I? Okay. So there's a, two pages of stipulations that we have to meet every year to be able to continue to do business there. And I am happy if we want to add some DEI language in there. I think there's some general language in there. But if it would make the committee feel better, I think we could get to more specifics in regards to that, if that would make those of you who are on the fence feel a little better about what I'm saying, if I'm gonna walk my talk in regards to recruiting and hiring and bringing people in from the neighborhood, bringing in foods and things like that. I'm happy to add that to the, to the, what is it called?
Performance assessment.
Performance assessment. If that would make the committee feel better, I think all three of us would be fine with something like that.
Thank you for sharing that information. And Commissioner, Commissioner Musich for the second time.
Thank you. Commissioner Alper has her light on and has not yet spoken, so I would defer to her if that would be the chair's preference.
Yes, I'm, because you are not on this committee, I'm gonna allow you to speak one time to keep things moving. But Commissioner Alper.
Thank you. I'll be very brief. I was watching on the monitor outside, and I just wanted to ask, I'm not on this committee. Thank you for recognizing me. I, I wanted to ask, because I'm not on this committee, that you please commissioners, that you would pass this out of committee so that we, the rest of us who are not on this committee would have a chance to vote on this proposal, on this resolution. I would also encourage my fellow commissioners who are concerned about the process to think about how we can look to the future and create policy. And, you know, make sure to rectify some of the things that have been brought up tonight. That, that would be my suggestion. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Musich for the second time.
Thank you, Co-Chair Schaefer, for allowing me to speak. So I just, I would like to share with my colleagues that the process that we're using here is a process that we have been using for a number of years. It's the same process that brought us the sous chef, that brought us Lola's. And I think what we're seeing different in this situation is that the environment for restaurants to start is incredibly challenging. And we also have a deficiency in the city in terms of a incubator program for people that want to get into restaurants and to get into this business. So when we have people sending us proposals, they're people that are already established, or they're people that are trying to step up from a food truck, and that's a big step, even into our spaces. And this space in particular is incredibly challenging to operate in. My son worked here for his first five years of employment with a really diverse group of folks. He loved working there, made a lot of good friends, learned a lot about working in the restaurant business. He's now a kitchen manager at Chipotle and loving it. So, yeah, I know people really would like to see more diverse candidates being considered, and I think there are ways for us to do that. I would love to see a discussion item around how we can be doing that in the future. But I also think we're going to have a lot of angry folks if we don't have a restaurant that's operating in this space next year. I'm encouraged by this proposal. I'm glad to hear that you're open to adding diversity and equity inclusion items to the assessment. I would hope that staff would discuss that with you further prior to this coming before the full board, if it does make it out of committee this evening. And, yeah, thank you all for your time and energy tonight on this discussion. It's been good. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I see no other lights, so I'll just add a couple of thoughts here. First of all, I'm really excited to see the intergenerational, familying aspect of that. This is something that is, I am serious, this is something that's part of our core strategies, is to encourage youth and intergenerational kinds of relationships. So to hear you speak of how you want to engage with the youth of the community is really inspiring to me. And I think Vice President Smith is a go-to person for ideas within the community of who you could reach out to and other organizations. I think it's exciting because we could use that pipeline for our community. And your enthusiasm is very appreciated, and the time that you've spent in putting forth these slides, et cetera. Your work is just beginning, I know, but we're excited that you have made it this far. And as part of this process of trying to have an ongoing commitment and dialogue between vendors and commissioners, and between commissioners and staff around our enterprise operations, I have proposed a resolution, amendment to this resolution this evening that I'd like to read and take a vote on first before we take the vote on the full resolution. And this is so that we have open communication, so that if, you know, commissioners are hearing something about a particular site all across our system, we have a formal opportunity with staff to bring forward the review of the year, the annual report, or the performance metrics, and then for us to hear what happened in that space, and then for us to give feedback, to make our processes stronger and to make our vendors stronger, so that everybody is successful. That's our goal. So what this says is, whereas the annual review of the performance metrics for concession are a new addition to these concession leases, Exhibit C, whereas the district commissioners of parks with new and developing vendors have a heightened interest in their overall success, ongoing operation, and best practices, whereas all commissioners are elected to hear from the community, represent their viewpoints, and share feedback received, whereas all commissioners have an interest in concession performance. We are resolved that the superintendent or their designee is directed to have a staff presentation of the annual review of the concessions in the park system at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners, including the performance metrics of Exhibit C as it applies to each and every concession lease. Resolved, the superintendent or their designee is directed to incorporate comments received from the commissioners at the meeting into the annual performance record and to share comments with the vendors. Is there any questions on this amendment before we take a vote?
Commissioner Alper. Thank you for recognizing me. I'm not on this committee. But I'm excited about this amendment, and thank you for proposing it, and I hope we get to vote on it at the full board next time. And I would just ask that the definition of concessions be widened a little bit to include wheel fund rentals.
This is a point of order. This is an amendment to operating agreement, not to our concession.
Oh, this is just, this is just this one. Well, that's too bad, because I think it would be really exciting overall to hear about all concessions. So I'll take that back then.
Secretary Ringold.
Co-Chair Schaefer, one thing that I will share with the group is that this is actually an amendment to the resolution versus an amendment to the contract. And I do think we have learned a little bit from our relationship with the Lopet Foundation, and that's kind of the spirit by which we bring, in that particular case, an annual report forward to the board. And we're thinking that that is a good move as well with our other concessions. Now, I don't know that we'll get all of the concessions in one year as we start this, but this amendment, as presented, is really in line with where we felt we wanted to go in general. And we'll definitely start with our food vendors and then move on from there.
Okay, if I could just respond, I thought it was, I thought, I was under the impression this was all concessions, not related just to this specific one. So I was envisioning in my head, you know, one presentation about all our concessions, but I would, I hope that we can eventually include wheel fund rentals in that as well. Thanks.
I, yes, I think this is specific for Painted Turtle and the others specific for Lola's, but I think the intent was not to call them out specifically, so that when we do get an annual report, that we would have as much of a collective report for as many concessions as we could. But I am able, I will take it either way that it comes out. Any other questions on this amendment?
Can you repeat it?
The whole amendment? I think there's.
Okay, I thought it was something.
Commissioner Minz, would you still like me to read it? No. All right, let's take a vote on this amendment. All those in favor of adding this amendment to Resolution 2022-307, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This amendment passes? Now let's vote on the full Resolution 2022-307, a contract award coming out of committee for the Painted Turtle. All those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Great. That was three ayes and two noes, and so Resolution 2022-307 passes. Thank you for your time. May I have a commissioner, please? Nice to meet you. May I have a commissioner, please, bring forward the next resolution?
Sure, I'll move Resolution 2022-308, Resolution Improving a Five-Year Lease Agreement with Lola's Cafe on the Plaza LLC DBA Lola's on the Lake to operate the concession facility at Bade Makaska, beginning on January 1st, 2023.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Stenzel.
Just going to get a second for a second. All right, thank you, Co-Chair Schaefer, Thompson, and Commissioners. The action before you is a five-year lease agreement for Lola's on the Lake to operate a concession facility at Bade Makaska, starting on June 1st, 2023. A brief, quick history here, can you guys see that?
January 1st.
January 1st, I'm sorry, January 1st. So for January 1st, 2023, a little brief history, in 2017, the Board of Inhasby passed Resolution 2017-358, approving a five-year lease agreement with Lola's Cafe on the Plaza LLC, doing business as Lola's on the Lake. Probably aware, in 2019, the facility caught fire and was burned beyond repair. In 2021, the NPRB approved a concept plan which included a new concession facility. If you've been out there lately, the walls are up, the ceilings or the roofs, I believe, are starting to go in. It's, construction is very much underway. So I'm just going to kind of just show you here real quick. Dan from, then Elias from Planning is here tonight, so if you have any questions on progress and anything like that, he is the lead on this project. Again, you've seen this before, but this is just from the view from the lake, once it's completed. View walking in from the, kind of the promenade area to the concession. A view from inside the pavilion. A view from a side entrance coming in there. And that is it. Any questions on that piece as far as the concept and that? Okay. Next, I'm going to turn it over to Annie here. She's going to read a letter from Louis King. He was unable to attend tonight. And then we'll do an introduction to the team, and we have another slideshow. So I'll get that slideshow ready to go. She's going to read the letter.
Good evening, Commissioners, Co-Chairs Schaefer and Thompson. I am reading a letter from the desk of Louis J. King, who is the proprietor and the individual with whom we entered into contract for operation of Lola's on the Lake at Bade Makaska. Madam President, Commissioners, first let me offer my apologies for being absent at tonight's meeting. I'm in a three-day meeting in New York that has been on the books for months. In light of my attendance, I am writing this letter of introduction to the newest addition to the world of Lola. Mr. Tommy Beavis is not only an accomplished corporate businessman, he has taken the Pimento brand from a hobby to television and now has products in Target. He is also committed to the community and the excellence of youth, as evidenced by his civic leadership and nonprofit involvement. I am honored that he has chosen to bring his skills and brand to this venture. I've built several enterprises by engaging young, brilliant, and energetic individuals to provide leadership and vision. Tommy fits this bill for all three. He has worked alongside me for the last year as we developed the plans to reopen the concessions at Bade Makaska. I have leaned on him and Victor Jones for their expertise and insights as we collaborated with staff to develop a concept that will wow the millions of visitors who come to the lake each year. Thank you so much for the opportunity to continue our work. As you can see, I am serious about ensuring that we bring our best efforts to the table. I look forward to continuing our journey. Respectfully, Louis J. King II. And with that, I will turn it over to the team. I'm going to give this to Jennifer for the record, and turn it over to Victor and Tommy to tell you a little bit about the newest iteration of Lola's.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Greeting Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here with you, with you this evening, and thank you for the introduction. Again, my name is Victor Jones, and I'm the founder and president of Victor Jones Consulting, and I'd like to talk just briefly about my background and my experience, and talk a bit about the project, the project as well. I'm a restaurant consultant. I live in South Minneapolis. I've been here for back approximately 25 years, but I've actually spent the majority of my professional career in the corporate world and worked my way up through the ranks of the industry. I've done, I think, everything you can do in a restaurant, and kind of culminated corporately with being the executive of one of the largest hospitality corporations in the States, where I oversaw domestic and international operations. And so through the course of my career, I've managed businesses, I've managed teams, I've built teams, I've opened scores of restaurants, including in the States, as well as internationally, Europe, Africa, the Middle East, and Asia. And in 2014, I was kind of ready for a change, really was kind of burnt out from the travel. I really wanted to get more involved in my community here. I think I almost spent more time out of the Twin Cities than in it, I was traveling so much. So I started my company in 2014, and one of my very first clients was Pimento Jamaican Kitchen. So I had the pleasure of working with Tommy and his team down there on some projects, and we worked professionally, had a lot of success together, enjoyed working together, and developed a friendship. But one thing I want to kind of add is I've been in restaurants all over the world, and what happens at Pimento was special. It's not just great food and great service, but the space itself, the culture, the welcoming, you go into Pimento and you look at who's dining there, it really is a community restaurant. And once I finished my professional obligation with Tommy, we just stayed in touch, and then when he shared with me the opportunity of Bade Makaska, I thought it was super exciting for a few reasons. One would be an opportunity to work with Tommy. Two, I think the site is fantastic. I've worked with Cunningham in the past on projects, I knew there was top-line designers on there as well, too. But I just felt the opportunity for just a tremendous F and B and cultural experience at Bade Makaska was like too good to pass up. So I'm really honored to be a part of the team, working with Tommy and Louis, and opening that restaurant up. I bring decades of experience in opening restaurants and building teams and running numbers, really helping businesses be successful. Now, in addition to my consultancy, I'm also a business advisor with Hennepin County, with the Elevate Business HP Program. And there, my focus is providing professional support and skills to community members and the underserved community as well, too. And on top of that, I'm also involved with the Connect Up Institute. And Connect Up is a social, financial, and enterprise development organization with a real focus on providing entrepreneurial and opportunities, again, to underserved people in the community. So I'm thrilled to be a part of Bade Makaska, Lola's on the Lake. I'm very excited about the experiences going to be generated there. I've been engaged in this process from very on, which is exciting for me, because a successful restaurant really starts with the design of the restaurant. And so Tommy and I, along with other members of the Park Board and Cunningham and people in our world, we really were very involved and hands-on in how that restaurant was designed, both the north and the south restaurant spaces for, you know, just so we know we can execute that menu, we know we can execute the service piece with it. Because if you don't build a restaurant to deliver a great guest experience, it's very difficult to do it after the fact. We also, in all of our processes of going through there, too, we also recognize, too, that, you know what? We want to be profitable, we want to offer great opportunity for people, but we also recognize, too, that labor can be tough. So through all of our planning process, we're really kind of looking at how we can build a smart restaurant, deliver a great neighborhood experience. And one of the more exciting components of it is the north side restaurant. We talked about, I think somebody mentioned incubator earlier on, but there are two restaurants here. There is the, kind of the larger space, Lola's on the Lake, which is going to be seasonal, and there's a little bit smaller building, the north restaurant, too. And what's very exciting for us about that is the opportunity it could represent to other restaurateurs. Bade Makaska is a tremendous location, lots of traffic, it's, I think it's a stunning design, but we're super excited about that smaller space. It will represent an opportunity for vetted businesses to present themselves down there. It can be really difficult to get started in this business. Tommy's story in itself is almost, not miraculous, but he's going to share it with you. But the fact we have a space down there, that we fitted it out, we built it out to be multipurpose, so there can be a young entrepreneur that wants to come in there and do their thing, have a functional restaurant that they can be successful in. So the idea of having that second restaurant space down there, too, was very, very exciting. It will be a vetted process. Don't get me wrong, but the ability for these young, talented entrepreneurs to walk into a space that's almost turnkey is really unique and really amazing, too. So that's another very, very exciting part about this, about this project for me. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Tommy Beavis.
All right. Thank you so much, Uncle Victor. Yes, yes. Hello, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Pimento posse. We, I'm Tommy Beavis, and I'm so excited and honored to be here with you this evening. See, Pimento's celebrating its 10-year anniversary this year, but Pimento started decades before that in my grandmother Babalu's kitchen, in the heart of Jamaica's West Kingston community. We're talking about Bob Marley's Trench Town, right? Even though my grandmother Babalu only had practically a third-grade education, she imparted- Even though my grandmother Babalu only had practically a third grade education, she imparted on us several things. And three of them would, I'd say would be great food. Grandma Babalu's food was bomb, right? And then she also imparted business savvy. And then on top of that, she also imparted a sense of community. And those three tenets are interwoven within the fabric of Pimento. Whereas it really is a great food, what we're planning on doing in a partnership with Lola's is to bring you some great food. So of course, we're going to bring back great chicken wings, with a boss lady chicken wings, which is so much fun. But we're also going to expand the menu beyond our regular jerk chicken, coconut rice and beans, sweet fried plantains, and island slaw and amazing sauces, which you have one of them in front of you. But we're going to also expand it to include those vegetarian options you're talking about, our curry veggies. Mm. Uh-uh. And then to add to that, we have a partnership with Beyond Burger and others to where we can offer plant-based hamburgers. But also, we're going to step it up a notch, right? Because you're going to be on the beach. So why not offer some fresh seafood, including some oysters to go with your red stripe while sitting there on the lake. So when combined, we know that we'll be bringing great food. From our operational standpoint, we have a world-class team, which of course, many of them have stuck the rest of this evening here. And thank y'all, by the way, sincerely. They're an amazing team and through their experience and our collective efforts with Victor and Louis, we're going to be able to operate a very successful restaurant. Pimento 10 years in and of the 10 years only, well, we've been profitable eight of the 10 years. God bless COVID, right? But as we grow, we want to continue to grow and bring our team along with us. And then the third part, of course, is community, right? Pimento is all about that community. So after George Floyd was murdered, as, as former, former committee member Nordstrom, Tracy was talking about earlier, we stepped up and we've always been that safe space for our community. And naturally, when our community needed us the most, we stepped up again and ensured that we were that safe space. And since then, we've actually created a B Corporation to generate revenue for our community, right? And then take that revenue and reinvest as we see fit through our foundation. So we have a B Corporation and a foundation. And then we also create a political action committee to support candidates who are supporting liberation. We're talking about liberation, we're talking about economic liberation. How do we create more black businesses, more diverse businesses? We're talking about social liberation, we're talking about food justice, because even though we're the food headquarters of the world, we're also a food desert right here. And we're ensuring that we're on the front lines of that to ensure that our people are getting fed, not just with food, but within their spirits. And then finally, when we talk about liberation, we talk about political liberation. So how do we find those who are out there on the front lines and showing that our communities remain safe or even become safer? And how do we show up to create that ecosystem around them as they're out there fighting for us, right? So again, a bit of background about us, start, launched 10 years ago in our backyard, had friends coming over, eating good food, and we're like, well, Charles them for this, right? And so we took our backyard grill at $100 tent from Target, went out on the streets of the Twin Cities, Uptown, Art Fair, Pride Festival, Renaissance Festival, and then got casted for a Food Network reality show. Haven't stopped looking back. Left corporate America, grew my dreadlocks. Yo. And, and we haven't stopped looking back. In terms of the recognition, we've been recognizing a lot of spaces and areas. We're well over 30,000 followers by now. And of course, we have some really good celebrities. When they're in town, they know where to go. Lizzo, looking at you. In terms of our food, this is a quick snapshot of our food, as I mentioned. And then this is what our space looks like. Again, when you come to Pimento, we say welcome home because we're your home, we're your safe space where you can come for great food, right? Great community and a sustainable business. And we're hoping that you give us this chance to partner with Lola's to bring Pimentos and Lola's on the lake. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now is the time for questions. Commissioner Musich.
I'm not on this committee, so if you'd like to allow the committee members to speak first, I'd be fine with that.
Go ahead. Your light was on, so I'll give you the floor.
Thanks so much for allowing me to speak. I'm not on this committee, so I appreciate the opportunity. I just would like to start by thanking you and Mr. King for not giving up on the Park Board. I know it took a really long time for us to get a building back that most of the first lease, Lola's didn't get to operate. And so that, that y'all didn't just walk away and instead have chosen to stay and activate this new building with us is, it's incredibly meaningful to me. So I just, thank you. Thank you for doing that. This new concept sounds, I think, almost more exciting than the first one. I can't wait to eat it. So thank you for bringing us something fun and unique and interesting to activate this new building. It's, it's good stuff.
Great. Commissioner Menz.
Thank you. I'm really excited, too. And I think I've got a dinner spot for Friday. So my wife loves Jamaican food. So I'm going to ask you the same question. So what is your waste disposal plan? So I'm not sure what happens at Pimento.
Yeah, we currently have everything compostable and recyclable at our restaurant and we've been doing that for, since opening. And naturally, we work with Park Board on ensuring that disposal is properly managed. And we have experience in different types of settings and so this is, this won't be new to us. It's more so how do we work with our community to ensure that they, too, respect the lake and ensure that they're using the bins? And our team is trained and prepared and ready for that and we'll be able to manage that easily.
And the team is prepared to manage that?
And working with the team, with the community to help them understand the importance of using the bins and also keeping the lake beautiful.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Vice President Smith.
All right. Question, I know you mentioned the second location, so during the off-season, kind of helping to create alternative spaces for other entrepreneurs. Can I just get a little bit more detail? Is that the north side location that you were mentioning?
It's, yeah, I'm sorry. It's the, it's, do you have a picture of it? The south side location, it's, it's the, okay.
Is that your?
Yeah, that one is designed for year-round. It's got heat and everything. The, the, the other location is, is, it's, it's not a year-round facility. It can be kind of fired up if we would like it to. But the other location is, is, is built for year-round operation. Now, it has, it has some limitations to it. For example, it doesn't have a hood system like the other, the other location does. But we make sure that we fitted it out with the basic equipment for an operator to, to function out of, so.
I have a point of inquiry. Are you asking about on-site here or there other restaurant?
No, I was talking about here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you. My other question is fairly simple, or just really just to thank you, I know of the work that you all did following the murder, the lynching of George Perry Floyd Jr. and feeding community and sort of showing up. And that's really what we're all about. And I think that's really significant. It's a testament to what we're talking about and kind of the things that I continue to reiterate, like putting people first with no exception. And so I do appreciate the thoughtfulness. I appreciate you telling your story and kind of how you got here and how you've been all over the world doing this. And that speaks to your ability to relate to people, right? And people, all different types of people, and the way that racism and white supremacy works, unfortunately, you have to be able to be, you have to know how to do that. So I don't have to ask you, what is your plan for relating to other people? Because you would not be successful if you had not figured that out. So I do appreciate it. I appreciate y'all folks still sticking out. Shane, I appreciate your work into this. This is, this is not a slide against you, this is just me saying we have to figure out the process.
Great. Any other questions? Commissioner Menz.
I have one question. Are we allowed to accept this gift?
No.
I don't think we are. Yeah, okay. Sorry.
The staff will appreciate it.
But I'm going to come to the restaurant. I'm going to buy one or three of them. In fact, this would make a great team gift. Okay, yeah, I'm going to come get some.
Okay.
Buy them at Target and at Target.com.
Did you have another question? All right, I have a couple of questions. I am the district commissioner. It's nice to meet you in person for the Bide Makaska spot. And you mentioned the south building. We're really excited. I think the bell and wheel are going in that building, from what I heard. The bell is going in the ceiling and the wheel is going on the wall. Tell us a little bit, when do you anticipate there may be someone occupying that space or being able to provide service for that space? From, I mean, I know it's going to be a lot to get the main, the north side, the north building going. Do you anticipate having some coffee or simple food service out of the southern building by that winter of next year?
Oh, by winter of next year?
Yeah, when the construction is complete, the first season.
Well, well, we hope to. We've actually, Tommy and I are pretty, we're pretty well-connected in the scene of what's going on here. We're kind of literally looking out for people right now that might be interested, as we're saying. We don't have, right now, we haven't decided on an opening date for that. Part of it's going to depend on the construction, the construction schedule, actually, where we can actually get occupancy to the space itself, too. So once we get, once there's, the, once the CO is in, we can look at opening the space up. But that window right now could be a month or even six weeks. So, you know, right now, our, you know, our goal is to have that, the main space open on, on June 1st, if not sooner. And absolutely, if we can get that smaller space sooner and start providing service experience out of it, we will.
Yeah. I wasn't anticipating a specific date. I just was curious generally if you were hoping by that, you know, when the seasonal season was winding down, if there would be something in that area. I guess I'm, I want you to see you guys succeed. And I think with the community right around there, it's been some bumps in the road between the food trucks and the, the fire and all these things. So just know that I am cheerleading you on. And at the same time, I think you're going to have some, some neutrality to negativity to, to, that you may face from the get-go, just opening with the same name. And, and not for anything that, any, blaming blame on anybody. But I think there was some, just a lot of stuff that happened during that time that I really want to see us to be able to push through and really be a positive, positive, you know, get, get out of the gate, you know, kind of experience. So my other question is, can you describe the working relationship between Louis King, Victor and Tommy? Kind of how that all, how that dynamic works and if you're a subcontractor, et cetera?
The dynamic works really well. Louis was one of the very first leaders I met in Twin Cities. I moved here in 2006. He and I competed for, in a United Way competition. He's proud to say that he's the only person who's ever beaten me so badly. But Louis and I go way back and from a community standpoint, when I was at Cargill, I had a managed relationship with Summit Academy, funding it and all that, because I was in corporate philanthropy then. So our families have grown very closely. My wife and his wife are friends and we all hang out together. And then as relates to Uncle Victor, which is who I call him, we have an amazing working relationship. He's technically a contractor with Pimento Relief Service, with Pimento. And yet, Pimento will be collaborating with Lola's separately from Victor.
Okay. Great. And then as far as the branding, are you going to be promoting that this is Pimento's, but we're called Lola's? Kind of explain to me how that's going to work at opening?
We're definitely going to lean heavily on the Pimento brand to help overcome some of those challenges you mentioned. And also to use the Pimento brand to draw in that community that loves us and supports us around the lake, including neighbors who showed up today to support us.
Right, exactly.
We know the brand value and we'll certainly be using that and make sure, make sure that we're balancing it.
So you may have a Pimento sign at the lake or Lola's or?
Right, whatever Shane thinks is.
Yeah. That's what I think. Chair Schaefer. No, we were, we're, there's, part of the agreement is talks about signage and what's allowed and what's not in menus and that type of thing. So that is going to be incorporated in as the Pimento. We didn't want to say this is Pimento, okay? It's still Lola's, it's still the contract. That's, that would, that would, that would trigger a new process. This is a partnership with Pimento. We had lots of discussions with Louis and Lola's on just the first year and expectations and, and we, we talked about that in great, great length and he put an amazing team together. And we, this is a home run and we're super excited for this and I just, I encourage you guys to vote for this tonight because it's, it's really special for the lake, so.
Great. Well, thank you for your enthusiasm and your partnerships and we'll look forward to being down there. Oh, I'm sorry. Vice President Smith.
Thank you. Tommy, I have a quick question for you. How much is the sauce? Because we can't accept it, but I can buy it.
$2.99 is what we retail, we wholesale it for.
Okay. So after this, I'm going to?
Yes, we'll be passing the collection later on. Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Close the wholesales.
Thank you. Any other questions? I would like to propose then this same amendment that you heard me read earlier for the painted turtle. Same rationale, whereas the annual review of the performance metrics for concession are a new addition to these concession leases Exhibit C, whereas the district commissioners of parks with new and developing vendors have a heightened interest in their overall success, ongoing operation and best practices, whereas, whereas all commissioners are elected to hear from the community, represent their viewpoints and share feedback received, whereas all commissioners have an interest in concession performance. Resolved, the superintendent or designee is directed to have a staff presentation of the annual review of the concessions in the park system at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners, including the performance metrics at Exhibit C as it applies to each concession lease. Resolved, superintendent or his designee is directed to incorporate comments received from commissioners at the meeting into the annual performance record and share comments with the vendors. Any questions on the same amendment? All those in favor of the amendment to Resolution 2022-308, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This amendment passes. And now for a vote on the contract. Resolution 2022-308 for Lola's. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously.
Yay. Thank you. Thank you. There you go, sir.
I will now adjourn the Admin Finance Committee.
Yay. Okay. President Forney, may I open the next committee? President Forney?
That's right.
Okay. The time is, I'm noting the time is 10:06. I'd like to convene the Planning Committee. Secretary, will you please take the roll?
Vice President Smith. Vice President Smith. Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Co-Chair Elper.
Here.
Co-Chair Bennet.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Would somebody move to approve the agenda?
No, moved.
Great. All those in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, the agenda is approved. That carries. There are no minutes. We have one eye, action item on our agenda tonight. Would somebody in the committee move the resolution and read it as it appears on the agenda?
Yes, I would like to move Resolution 2022-311. Resolution approving temporary occupancy under Section 4F of the Transportation Act of 1966 for CASA 153, Lowry Avenue Northeast, Reconstruction Project adjacent to and within Wyndham Northeast Park.
Thank you. And I believe we have a presentation on this? Do we? Or is there an interest in a presentation or we could?
One slide.
We have one slide. We have a wee presentation.
Thank you.
So this is a temporary occupancy under 4F. You've dealt with these in the past. This is a, a process that's reserved for when there are transportation impacts on parks that meet certain parameters. Most notably, that there is no change in land ownership, that the impacts are either temporary or park beneficial, and that they are also very minor in nature. The county is reconstructing Lowry Avenue Northeast. The eastern terminus of that project is Johnson Street Northeast. On the corner of those two streets is Wyndham Northeast Park. In order to reconstruct the intersection, including ADA pedestrian ramps, there's a need to actually put some of that new pavement, accessible pavement on parkland and then to tie into our existing pathway. You can see that highlighted on the screen in the red kind of circle. If you look really closely, there are red property lines and the corner is cut. The enhanced ADA ramps and enhanced crossings will provide additional access into the park. So we feel like there are park benefits and extremely limited impacts.
Wonderful. Thank you. Are there questions? Oh, Commissioner Menz.
Is that where the sign is?
I'm sorry.
The Wyndham Northeast sign.
Co-Chair Bennet, Commissioner Menz, before I answer your question, I neglected to say, sadly, that Kelly Augusto from the county, from Head of County, has been here with us all evening and can also answer questions. It would be really sad if I didn't even recognize her.
Thank you so much, yeah.
And now I'll answer your question. Commissioner Menz, I'm not as familiar with the park as I should be, but if the sign is on that corner, I still don't expect there's any impact because there's no way that it would be right up on that corner. So I think we'll be okay.
While the county person's here, too, I've gotten a lot of questions about the Lowry Avenue reconstruction because of stints in boulevard and the parkway. Will those things be coming up this year, too? Any other improvements down there? I mean, I'm just wondering for future. You don't have to answer it now, I'm just sort of posing the question that there's going to be other places where parkland comes into play on the Lowry Avenue construction, correct?
Chair and Commissioners, I'm Kelly Augusto. I work for the Design Division of Hennepin County and imagine managing the Lowry Avenue reconstruction project. And I do know of a mill and overlay plan for Lowry Avenue going east from Johnson Street to Stinson as well.
Okay, great.
It will be timed a bit like with our construction or slightly after.
Okay. There are people in the community asking about that construction because of some timing and some possible modifications that would make sense that might not be in the current plan. So thank you for giving that information.
You're welcome.
Are there other questions on the committee? I have a question for Mr. Arvidson. So I'm just being, it's late for me, but the, is it temporary occupancy because of the construction activity? Not because of this is encroachment, right? And this just becomes part of the path into the park?
So, Co-Chair Bennet, any federally funded transportation project has to somehow move through 4F, the 4F process. And the temporary occupancy is one way of doing that. And so it is, it is the impact to parkland associated with federal funding that triggers 4F. And when those impacts are considered to be minor and temporary with no change in land ownership, we can use the temporary occupancy vehicle, which is a much more streamlined process for us all.
Very helpful. Thank you. Are there other questions? Okay, well, seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor of approving this agenda or this resolution signify by saying aye. Aye.